Good afternoon, welcome to our Santa Barbara Unified School Board of Trustees Meeting for December thirteenth, different from my regular Tuesday. However, and also those who may be joining us on Zoom, are there any requests to speak for a closed session? So no hearing, no request to speak for closed session, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Trustees Meeting, Wednesday, December thirteenth, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Actually, do, yes, we'll actually have translation, interpretation. Thank you.
Good evening. In order to provide language access, we have Spanish interpretation available in person and on Zoom, and we also have ASL interpretation on Zoom. Muy buenas tardes, tenemos interpretación en español, por si alguien gusta escuchar la presentación en español. Gracias. Thank you.
Now, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise and face the flag.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. Thank you, those who are here in the room. We are now be moving to next on our agenda. First of all, this is our reorganization of the Board of Education. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. Maldonado.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor and call for nominations for SB Unified President of the Board. Do we have any nominations? Mr. Escobedo?
So before I make a nomination, I did want to talk about, make a brief comment about process for nominations or deciding who the president, vice president, clerk will be in the future. I've been a part of other bodies, I've watched many meetings, and I think process is really important. This board is elected by districts, and so no board president is selected by the voters. And so for that reason, we have processes like this to make sure that each board member gets a role at the leadership opportunities by the board, but also that each board member has equal voice in saying the processes. I think our current process leaves open the opportunity for future boards to have conflict where I don't think it's necessary. So I'm going to suggest that in the future, after we have seated a fifth board member, that we come back to this board and we talk about amending board policy to make sure that it is a procedural policy that district by district we move through without having to ask for nominations and leave open the opportunity for certain board members to be board president year after year. This year, ironically, I'm going to nominate President Sims Moten for this role, but I think after that, it would be nice if it was procedural that we moved through the position by districts, because next year, we're going to have all five seats that are going to be district elections. I think it would be appropriate. And so I'm going to make that suggestion, and I'm also going to nominate President Sims Moten.
Ms. Sims Moten, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination with appreciation and gratitude and humility as well. I think now that we're in the district, that makes better sense in terms of the procedure, how it's really clear, it's not confusion. So I agree with your suggestions to come back and make that a part of the board policy to do that. I think, you know, I've been here now eight years, it's always kind of transitioned through, there has been a structure, but now that we are going into a structured districts, and it'll make it much easier and less confusing. So I, again, I accept the nomination, I thank you for that, and hear you with regards to bringing it back to the board to make it clear on policy.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or discussion by the other members of the board or members of the board?
Yes, I would also certainly agree with Mr. Escobedo and his nomination of Ms. Sims Moten for president to serve again. I think she's done an excellent job, and I think for continuity on our board at this time, in particular, that I think, you know, I certainly think it would be in the best interest of our district to have Ms. Sims Moten lead us again, and I do look forward to looking at, you know, amending the board policy and discussing that when it comes up. So thank you, Mr. Escobedo, for bringing that up.
I agree with the sentiments expressed. I want to just say thank you to President Sims Moten for the work and the leadership, and I think it's a wise decision at this time to have you continue. Gabe, I appreciate the thoughtful approach to creating policy that formalizes this and for all the right rationalizations, so strongly in support.
All right, board members, with that said, we'll do a roll call vote, and I'll start with Mr. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Munoz?
Aye.
Mr. Banning?
Aye.
Ms. Wendy Sims Moten?
Aye.
And we'll give Anastasia an opportunity to weigh in as our student board member.
Aye.
The nomination passes unanimously in favor of Ms. Wendy Sims Moten as our new president. Congratulations, and at this time, I do want to say one quick thing, because we don't know how these go, we also wanted to thank you for being our current president and finishing your term for this last calendar year. Thank you very much, and with that, I'm turning the meeting back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Can we give her a nice round of applause?
Thank you for that. This really is humbling more than I think, and I really appreciate the sentiments from my colleagues. It's always good to know that you have some support. We've been in difficult times, and maybe not everybody's agreeing with where we're going, but the main thing is we want to make sure that we are creating an environment from leadership and leading the way and how we want to be a district and leading in difficult times. Sometimes that's difficult to do, but just appreciating just the work in general of the board and certainly the interactions that we have with the public, creating an environment where the public feels like they can come and be a part of this, even when there are things that are hard to hear. But this is what you do as a leader, and you continue to keep the eye, if you will, on what it is that we're doing here and why we need to do that, and it makes it easier to get through difficult times. And so I appreciate that, and I want to continue to work hard to be the leader that you have expectations of me and also setting the tone as we continue to go forward. So, and I'm always very proud in good and bad times to be a part of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And with that, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for Santa Barbara Unified Vice President Trustee. Do I hear any nominations? Mr. Banning?
I would like to nominate Gabe Escobedo for vice president. I have had the experience of being in the superintendent's seat and now on the governing board, and I want to say what a privilege it is to have somebody with his background and experience, and I would like to see him as vice president, and presuming that there are rotations in place, make sure that that time, because it is different than the other roles, and to make sure that during that time, he has significant opportunity to be mentored and prepare for the role of president of this board at a future date.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay.
Gladly second, Mr. Escobedo, to be vice president and for future being our president.
Mr. Escobedo, do you accept the nomination?
I do, and thank you for the kind words.
Thank you. So may I have a roll call vote? I'll say, Ms. Munoz?
Aye.
Mr. Banning?
Aye.
Student board member Anastasia?
Aye.
Mr. Escobedo?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and congratulations as a new vice president. I look forward to working with this board as we continue to make things again, making our leadership and administration of this piece together, so we appreciate that. All right. There was a back hat for the page, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for our Santa Barbara Unified Clerk of the Board. Do I hear any nominations? I'll make a nomination. Mr. Banning, I'd like to nominate you for clerk, for clerk of the board. Do I hear a second?
Enthusiastically second.
Yes. Mr. Banning, do you accept the nomination?
Stickly third.
Okay. Mr. Banning, do you accept the nomination? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Munoz?
Aye.
Board member, student board member?
Aye.
Aye, and Mr. Banning?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much and congratulations. All right. Okay, so now, we've got a lot of reorganization things that we're doing here, so next, it's requested that the...
Madam President?
Yes.
Do we switch?
Oh, you can switch the chairs, yes, you two can switch. Thank you for reminding me that. I thought we were all kind of saying the same. It's requested that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the Superintendent Hilda Maldonado as Secretary of the Board of the 2024 calendar year.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Secretary for the 2424 year. And next, we'll go to item E6, review and approval of a 2425 board meeting schedule. What members, you have that in front of you, your item E6 in your packet? Are there any concerns of the schedule that's set before us? Recognizing that in September and November and December, there is a little, you want to pay attention, that's one meeting a month, there's a convenient workshop, and so be mindful of some organization things that have to happen on those particular dates, so are hearing no additional comments and/or concerns, may I have a motion?
I still move.
One second.
Been motion second, all in...
Sandra, can you walk us through two dates? We're asking for a fourteenth or twenty-first in September, a twelfth or nineteenth in November, ten or thirteenth in December, is that?
That's correct. So for September, we have either the fourteenth or the twenty-first. Considering we already have two regular board meetings on that month, we need to choose one of those other two dates for the governance workshop.
So is it twenty-fourth, is that the third, would that be the third Monday, or is that a Monday? I'm not sure what day.
Those are Saturdays.
Are those Saturdays? Okay.
That'd be the fourteenth or Saturday.
Okay. Any preference?
I have no preference.
Same here, no preference.
Okay, so, do we want to do the fourteenth, or does that work?
Fourteenth it is.
Fourteenth?
Okay.
Let's settle on that one, and then the same request on November twelfth or nineteenth?
So that's a regular board meeting, so it's either choosing the twelfth or the nineteenth, Tuesdays.
Twelfth.
The twelfth, yeah, because thinking, because the nineteenth is getting closer to the Thanksgiving holiday, so we'll do the twelfth.
Okay.
And then December...
Yeah, for the December meeting, because we have an election year, the board has to be seated by the second Friday of the month, so we request that we have December tenth as a regular board meeting and December thirteenth, just to do the reorg of the board. So we're asking for two meetings on that month.
That's fine.
Okay, yeah. We're not having to choose between the two, just that you're notifying us.
Yep.
Okay, so ten and thirteen will be on that day. Okay, all right. Thank you, Sandra. So with that, it has been motion and second and discussed, may I have, do I have a motion yet?
I'll move to approve the dates, times, and place of regularly scheduled board meetings for a 2425 school year.
Okay, second?
I second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion passes. Next, we'll move to item E8, appointment of a representative to the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization. So may I have a nomination or a volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. What does this committee actually do? Do we have, just to make sure that we're clear of what our expectation...
It meets only, every district has a representative, it meets only at the times that there are potential changes in boundaries or, really, boundaries are organizations of particular districts. So there is a committee that meets regularly, however, this position that we're voting on is just, I would be a representative at any time that affected our district by the changes of either feeders or our own district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banning, for that. So you are the appointed member, that I don't know that we have to take a vote on that, so we're making an appointment of that, so thank you for volunteering for that. And then we'll move to E8, item E8, appointed representative to the Santa Barbara County Schools Board Association. I think in the past, we've had, this has been vacant, really. So, and what does that do exactly? So board members can have an explanation, idea?
I'm going to ask Sandra to come up for that one as well.
Is this sitting with their county board? I think so.
Yes, and they're going to put up the explanation here. This is for a representative of the Santa Barbara for the California School Boards Association, and the meeting dates, if you scroll, Brenda, can you scroll up? You should be able to see the dates of the meetings.
Okay.
If you go slow. There. So they meet once a month, and it's here locally at the county office of it, and it's just a representative from our board.
I would like to...
Ms. Munoz?
Sorry, I would like to volunteer for that.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Sandra. Okay, Ms. Munoz, thank you for volunteering for that. Okay, board members, we're moving to E9, approval of action to fill the board seat vacancy.
Good evening, President Sims Moten, congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Escobedo. Good evening, Ms. Maldonado and board members. It is this time that we have to make a decision around how we will fill Trustee Alvarez's vacated seat. This evening, we have with us, we have Austin Payne here, so if you have questions afterwards, then we can, we can bring his expertise into the mix here. As she's, as you're bringing up the slide, I could just start talking about some of the key points. One is that with Ms. Alvarez submitting her board of resignation on November twenty-seventh, that immediately starts the clock ticking. We have a sixty-day period where we will have to fill the seat, and we have to do it within two ways, order an election, that's number one, or number two, do a provisional appointment. As you may remember, we did that last year, so this, we already have some experience with that. The deadline is January twenty-fifth, I want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we go through the process. All right. I gave you the two dates on top there. A key thing to remember about ordering the election, unlike last year, we were two years into the next general election for the seat, this one in particular, if you order election, what'll end up happening is that the election that this will occur for the replacement will occur on November fifth. The deadline to submit that one hundred and thirty-day requirement, that was actually on November thirtieth, and so the letter came in on the twenty-seventh, and right now, on September, or September thirteenth, December thirteenth, you're making the decision. So we're past that deadline for the April ninth election, so it'd have to be the November If you go the route regarding the provisional appointment, some key things to remember and some, as you can see, some of the items, if you decide to go this route, things that will need to be completed tonight, we'll review the application. Another thing that we will do is that we will have to determine the date and times that we'll meet to interview candidates. So the first date is primarily, depending on how many applications we get, that will be the date we will interview the candidates, and the second date is tentative date in case we have additional candidates to interview. But we want to go ahead and put that on the docket if that's the decision. Another thing that we'll have to do is make sure that we determine how long each interview will be, so whether it'll be thirty minutes long, forty minutes long, or so on, we want to do that because that helps us with the scheduling of the candidates and contacting them when it, when we get close to reviewing the applications and setting the schedule for the interviews. And the last thing is that we'll interview the, we'll review the interview questions, and then you'll decide whether you want to add additional questions or anything to those as well. The process itself, one of the few items that I want to bring up is that we're recommending that we open the window this Friday, the fifteenth. Again, we don't have a lot of time, so we're moving quickly. So if we do this process, we will open the application window this Friday, and then we will close the window on Wednesday, January third. The reason is that, one, we have to review all the applications and make sure that each of the candidates do qualify. The second thing is that we have to contact the candidates and do the scheduling. And, you know, again, if we're talking about starting the interview process right away, that doesn't give us a lot of time around, you know, a lot of turnaround time. So that's why we suggested January third. Couple of other items that I put up, I put up advantages and disadvantages for both. Really, the bottom line is that ultimately, if you do go the provisional appointment, you'll fill the vacancy right away. If you don't and do the order of election, the seat will be vacant, and then you could see the variations to what works well and what doesn't. Ultimately, we have to make the decision today. So that is my report to you.
Are there any requests to speak on this side? I don't think there is, but I, no requests to speak. Okay, so board members, questions?
No questions, just a request. So I think the smartest way is provisional appointment, it makes a lot of sense. If I had any feedback from the last appointment process, it would be, let's make it a little bit simpler, let's not rank people in a public meeting, let's have board members nominate their top candidates, if they have a top candidate in mind, and then the board can vote, and whoever gets the most votes, that it's a pretty recognized process for appointing for committees and commissions at both the county and the city, so I think it's far simpler than what we did last time, it got a little confusing, so that would be my only feedback, but otherwise, everything else looks good, and I'm ready to support moving forward with the provisional appointment.
Additional comments, board members?
I also support the provisional appointment.
Ms. Munoz?
Certainly, I support the provisional appointment, and the only thing that I would say is, of course, because of the necessary deadlines, is that if someone is, you know, one, able to make, complete their application during the holidays, holiday time, and then the, also the demand on school, school staff, we're around, you know, twenty-four seven, but also on the demand on school staff to go through that, you know, that whole process and so forth, depending on the interest that there is, and I, you know, want to consider that, that folks may have vacation plans and so forth, but I support it.
I also support the provisional appointment process, I think that's the most efficient and open, otherwise, I feel like it's just closed until you come to an open election, so I think this gives the community the opportunity, again, to participate in this process. But I do have a question with regards to maybe some clarification as to, because as Mr. Escobedo talked about earlier, we are be going into districts in twenty-four, so this position is still part of a district-wide, so be really clear that that, you don't have to live in that district that's vacant right now to apply for this appointment, so if we can explain a little bit about that.
Yes, so because Trustee Alvarez was voted into an at-large district, which means that we didn't have trustee areas at the time. So that means anyone who's living within the boundaries of Santa Barbara Unified can actually apply as a candidate. If the, if the person who's applying, if they live in trustee area number five, then they have the opportunity to also run when it's open for the election that's on November fifth, for that seat, so.
Yeah, no, there was some clarification that had been asked in the community, so I wanted to do that. Also, what has been asked, if we could have a clearer map, perhaps we updated our map on our website, that's much clearer in where the district boundaries are, it's not as clear to see, so if we could update that to make, have a little bit more clearer distinction between where the boundaries are, so people are aware of that as well. So it looks like, sounds like, we got for support toward doing the, excuse me, doing the provisional appointment process.
So we do have to, as a board, you do have to do an official vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So that was going to be my next question, may I have a motion to approve the, filling the board seat vacancy through a provisional appointment?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, go ahead, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I propose to...
So just need a second now.
I'm sorry, I second.
Yeah, okay. Then motion and second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so that's, that step.
That's number one, step one. And so you have packets that were provided, they're the hard copies of what was provided to you. If you would like to go over the candidate application, if you have questions, or if you would like to add a question to the application, this would be the time we can discuss it.
Board members, any comments or questions on the application? And?
I'll just say, having, having gone through this a year ago, I found it to be easily understood. The one, one thing I would say is that the, the questions that would be on page two of two, where there's ten questions, there, I would suggest a clear statement of the length of answer to that. I saw it and read it as, complete the questions and filled it in within the space that was there. So I just, I think there's different approaches to that, it would be a good idea if we had the same approach from, from each of the candidates, whether it's answered on a several, a separate sheet, or whether it's answered to try and fit within these, these areas.
Is that something, we can put limitations on that, just?
We could do that, I mean, we, there's always applications, they say two hundred and fifty words, or whatever it may be, that's designed with that, to give guidelines. I think, the one thing is, I don't want to limit it to the space that's on the page, because that doesn't feel, if we have someone who wants to provide a clear explanation, we want to make sure that they're able to do so. Okay, so I think that the trick then will be to make sure that it's the statement on the direction to candidates, submit a completed board vacancy candidate application along with proof. There was, I think, just, if you'd give this a careful reading and find out if there could be any way that that could be read to, I was under the impression that this was part of that form, and if you complete a form, I would just say, make sure it's clear that the person can expand...
the person can expand on the answers beyond the small space that's on the sheet. Okay? Let's see if I can figure out where that was.
I thought it was on the application itself. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was on the application bill, but I don't, I don't see it.
I don't see it anywhere this time, so.
Yeah, okay, that might have been.
Are you, Mr. Banning, are you saying the, on the page of the application where it says on the very top, the dates, down, or downward, it gives the date of the deadline, it says completed applications with proof of residence, or completed, anywhere that, where it says completed applications, we could put a description?
Right, because it, it's the, it's the first number on the directions to candidate, submit a completed board vacancy candidate application form, and when we give them that, we give them all of these pages. So if, if that's a form, I think that's the way I read this, and being rather literal in my understanding, when it says completed the form, it's, here's the form you gave me, I need to complete it. So just a clarification that it's, you know, use additional space as needed, or something like that.
Okay.
Board members, any additional comments, questions, or edits?
I agree with, you know, I think that is helpful in terms of the directions to candidates under number one, right, on that first page, and then I would also suggest, you know, on the application form to also specify, you know, as a reminder.
That they can write beyond just the limited space.
Yes, can, you know, I don't know, can attach separate pages as, as needed or such.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vans.
Okay, so hearing that is, yes.
I have a clarifying question to the comment on the process. Are you going to be bringing back something for the board to discuss later on the process for selection, given the comment by Mr. Escobedo on whether it's ranking or, or nominations? Thank you.
Yes, yes.
So that'll, that'll come at another meeting.
That'll have to come, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so hearing discussion, questions, and suggested edits, do I have a motion to approve the application and the questions as presented?
I, I would move to approve as, as noted with the, with the clarifications that we discussed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you now have that, and you have our comments and edits with regards to that. I believe, is that it, Mr.?
So, we have a few more things, we have to choose our, our meeting dates.
Yes.
And starting time.
So, so this would be the meeting dates, we're looking at in January?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So we look to our calendar.
Did you have to send the slides through?
Yeah, what dates?
I had the span.
So we have two regular meetings in January, which is the fourteenth and the eighteenth, excuse me, a fourteenth and a twenty-eighth are regularly scheduled meetings. Yeah, twenty-fourth and twenty-eighth, two regular scheduled meetings. So we need to...
Then the, the goal is to complete the selection prior to the meeting on the twenty-third, is that?
It, the...
So the meetings are the ninth?
The ninth?
The ninth, and the, the regular scheduled meetings are the ninth, and the...
Oh, for this year, this is twenty-fourth, yes, yes.
And the question is, where do you want to insert the special board meeting for the candidates?
We have a meeting on the sixteenth.
The, the meeting is not on the ninth?
Ninth and the twenty-third, right?
The website says January sixteenth and January thirtieth.
Yeah, it's the, it's the third.
Second and the fourth.
It's not during the week of the eighth, it's the following week.
Okay, I've got some date issues on my calendar then.
Sandra, can you verify for us that the board meeting dates on the website are the correct ones?
Sixteenth?
Uh-huh. Thirtieth?
January sixteenth, January thirtieth? Yes, okay.
I have one every Tuesday in my calendar. Okay, so sixteenth and thirtieth.
When we have that one meeting, it kind of throws it off. Okay, so we got to pick some dates in between there. So the, the third is that, that's closing the window, we've got to give you time to review them and do all the things you need to do, so what?
Yeah, so if you would like to choose a date, it could be, you were looking at the ninth, that could be a possible date, January ninth, or anytime during that week of the, the eighth.
How many dates do we need? Do we need just one or two?
One date, definitely, you want to schedule another date as a tentative date, yeah.
Because we end up having to do that, we had to have two dates.
We didn't use the second date, but we, we need that backup.
Right.
My interview was a, a week after the first interviews, or a week gap between the two. I would suggest, if possible, that we try and have a second day alternative, be the next day, maybe the ninth and the tenth, to not have that big gap in between hearing, hearing candidates, if they have to be split between two days.
So if we're looking at the week of January eighth, right, is that what you said, Mr. Vans? So will we be nine and ten, or nine and one, nine and eleven, I just don't pin?
Nine and ten works, I mean, that week is open for me, so.
You live for nine and ten? And that works for you in terms of process for you to get your things together, gives you enough time?
Yes, the date is to the third, and we're back that week, many of us are back that week.
Okay, well, it looks like the board is looking at January ninth and ten, ninth is the first, and then tenth is the backup.
And what time?
Yeah, so what, that's going to come to?
Six?
We did it in the evening, I think we did it at six. Yeah.
Six P M?
Last time we started in the early afternoon for one date, and then the second day, I think we did later in the day, so.
Yeah.
I think it's also contingent on number of applicants, that kind of drives a little bit of that, but is there a way you can do earlier in the afternoon, or?
Can we consider five P M? Only, you know, I only say five P M because then there's also two other board meetings that month. It's four-thirty.
Five P M?
Yeah, that works.
Five, we just have a start time of five.
Yes.
You have ninth and tenth at five P M.
Five P M, okay. Not six, okay.
Not six.
Okay, so we got the hardest part done. How many, how many minutes per interview? Thirty, thirty-five, forty? Last time it was thirty.
I think, that's going to say, we had thirty, and I thought that was sufficient time, I don't, I didn't hear any concerns about it, you know?
What did you think, Mr. Banning?
Thirty minutes.
It was fine.
Okay.
I was right up to the mark, maybe a few seconds after. We need the yellow light, yeah, I think it was on, I just didn't understand what that meant.
Okay.
Okay, so thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, and then the last thing that we have to do will be done, which is just take a look at the interview questions, we have five questions.
Okay.
Anything that you would like to edit, add?
So, Mr. Benny, I would say, I mean, these questions are good, but it, you know, is there anything you would have wished we would have asked? I mean, that might be, because I think these are still relevant.
I think that they gave you every opportunity, they were rather spread out, and that, between that and the written questions, I, I mean, I'm sitting here at work, for me.
Yeah. Any revisions to the existing questions? Ms. Munoz?
Yes, I was just wondering, let me see here, trying to see where it would fit in as a possible, yeah, it's not to be, sorry, I was trying to think of, maybe under number one, where it says, you know, what's your prior experience serving on a governing board, advisory board, and our school district board?
Sorry, Ms. Munoz, we're looking at the second document that has the five questions, or did you want to go back to the application questions?
Oh, okay, no, sorry about that.
No, that's okay, we can go to that one too, if you want, but...
That's okay, yeah, I'll look at this.
So, so possibly under number four, I wondered what the rest of the board thought about, you know, where it says about if you believe you did not have accurate and complete information for making a decision, possibly what is your experience in collaborating, collaboration when there is a difference of opinion? You know, something along those lines?
Are you alluding to like consensus decision-making, or something?
Yes, correct.
Or the process of collaboration and reaching consensus?
Yes, reaching consensus, uh-huh. I don't know if that's where it would fit in, and I, it's just a thought. Mistress, oh.
Is that sort of what's being asked in number three? How are you voting on something? Is it sort of, they are different? I mean, you know, to, to your point about consensus, if that's what I'm hearing you say, number four?
Yes, that possibly number three? Is that what you mean, or, or that we already have that question in other, in other, stated in a different way?
Yeah, it might be stated in that, is that, you know, how did you determine the vote with, through values, or what, how you, how you determine to get that, so.
I agree.
So maybe it's there, and, and maybe it's implied, but if it's not clear, and you're thinking that needs to be further clarified?
Yes, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, President Sims.
So any additions, additions to the board interview questions? Hearing no additional questions. So I think we're good as standing, the ones that we have.
Okay, all right.
We don't have to take a vote on that, right?
You do not.
Okay, we do not.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Did that conclude that business?
We're done.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we're doing some, thank you, Mr. Vance. It's good that you're here, that would walk us through it last time, so you had some good insight to go there. So we're going to do some agenda management today, because we do have a time certain item at seven o'clock, so, Mr. Escobedo, are you looking at to go to?
Yeah, so we have a time certain item at seven P M, and I was thinking that we have quite a few public speakers, that we have the report on the work of the Oversight Committee addressing all hateful bias and anti-black language and actions, at seven o'clock, which is pretty soon. I figure that gives us enough time for maybe the student board member report, and then maybe we can go straight into public comment after the time certain item, and we can forego our board and superintendent reports until afterwards, if that's okay. So, Ms. Sims?
Yes, please, Anastasia, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. These past weeks, at all three of the schools, students organized walkouts in order to stand in solidarity with... In order to stand in solidarity with teachers getting higher pay, so students left class and then organized speeches. This is because teachers have been working a contract, which have impacted students because they're not able to receive help outside of class, host clubs, school events where they need staff, and have support from their trusted adults. And students recognize that without proper wages, both students and teachers cannot perform at their best, which led to the walkouts. So at D P, around a thousand people were absent, and around five hundred made the walk all the way to Gersh Park. At S M, again, similar numbers, around a thousand students left, and seven hundred made it to Tucker's Grove. And then at S B, around eight hundred went to the district office. And then in addition, the high schools have been giving back to the community through several drives, including the blood drives, canned food drives, and a toy drive. And then this is our last week before our three-week winter break, and the holidays coming up, and with Hanukkah in process, and we've just been having different spirit activities, including Spirit Week at S M, activities in the Greek, and movie nights. That, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent, you can start your report until we get to seven o'clock, do you have some, okay, thank you. So we'll have you go ahead and start your report, start your report, because we still have time before seven.
Do you want me to start my?
Yeah, I want you to start your report. We were, but, you know, now we can move it around so that we can make sure we're on seven o'clock.
Okay, very good, I will try to be short. I just want to start with saying that the winter break has arrived, as Anastasia has stated, and we want to start with a wish for everyone to have peace and joy, along with family and friends during this holiday season. As we know in nature, winter is a time to shed, rest, and slow down the pace, as the colder weather requires more time indoors. For some, the pace of work increases, while for others, like those of us in education, it is time to take a break, reflect, recharge, and re-energize for the next half of the school year. Our sincerest hope is that the winter break allows everyone to build new memories while you reminisce about your loved ones near or far. I do want to just talk about a couple celebrations. One of our very unique programs at Santa Barbara Unified that I was very impressed with when I arrived is the Peak Program, and it was celebrated and honored at the Golden, as a recipient of the Golden Bell Award at California School Boards Association a few weeks ago. It was chosen for its excellence in helping close the opportu, I think we have the wrong picture, it was chosen for its excellence in helping though, close the opportunity gap for first-generation and college-bound students by improving student outcomes and reducing achievement gaps. And I'm not sure if we've had a Golden Bell Award for Santa Barbara Unified, but I'm very proud of us receiving that award, and I want to thank the Peak founders of this program, our partners, J S Baller Foundation, Santa Barbara Education Foundation, and others who helped really launch this program many years ago, and Dr. Madrigal as well. I also had a chance to visit, thank you to Courtney Anderson, the D P Vocal Music Winter Concert last week, it featured all of the choirs, including several select soloists, amazing voices, as well as the Colita Valley Junior High Choir, we were so excited to see them and hear their beautiful voices, and thank you to Ms. Anderson for the invitation. I also want to congratulate our principal, Franklin Elementary Principal Casey Kilgore, who was given the 2023 Congressional Woman of the Year at a school-wide assembly. We are, yes. We are, we are so proud of all the work she does each and every day to go above and beyond for her school community, and we want to thank also Congressman Salud Cogra Hall for recognizing Ms. Kilgore. With that, I'd like to end with our Every Child Award. I want to start with Gloria Rodriguez from Dos Pueblos High School. Gloria stepped in last minute to teach the Parent Project class when our Padres Unidos Partners were unable to continue due to a medical challenge. This is the type of impact Gloria has on a daily basis at Dos Pueblos, where she's a trusted member of our school community for so many students and families. Congratulations, and thank you to Gloria. Next, we have from McKinley Elementary, Renee Garcia Gonzalez. He accommodates each family, he accommodates each family that he's supporting, often coming in early or staying late so he can meet their needs. He has supported many families recently in attaining housing, as well as getting them connected to community resources. The McKinley community appreciates Renee in all he does. And from our very own district office, Mr. John Shetler. Yes, you can clap, it's nice. John not only works well with our parents, guardians, and staff, but he is warm and welcoming to our youngest community members, taking few, those few extra moments to address them before a meeting begins. He leads with compassion, empathy, and expertise, and we're very proud to work alongside Mr. Shetler. Next, we have from Adams Elementary, Kenya Catalan. Kenya knows every student by name and greets him with a smile, and what... and what can I do for you when they come into the front office, even though it takes her away from her regular responsibilities? She will find a Band-Aid, their parent's phone number, a lunch, or just listen if they need to report something. Thank you, Kenya. From La Cumbre Junior High School, we have Shannon Curtis. Shannon opens the library to students at nutrition and lunch, and in the process, she's created a safe culture of belonging for students, especially that may feel disconnected from school or have difficulty socializing. She does this by building positive relationships, having them play games, or giving them a chill space to interact with friends. I can tell Shannon is popular. And then we have from Washington Elementary, Octavio Gonzalez. Recently, Octavio read to one of our third-grade classes as a guest reader. The book he chose had both English and Spanish words. Afterwards, Octavio told the students that all of them had gifts to become whatever they want to be. He is a perfect example of how all staff members can positively contribute to the lives of our students, and yes, we believe that bilingualism is a superpower that our children bring from their homes. So thank you, Octavio, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. So again, just so that you know that while we're doing kind of back and forth on our agenda, because once we post something, we cannot start that item before it's time to do that. So bear with us, and thank you for your patience. So I will go to item G1, Accepting Donations for December 13, 2023, May Have a Motion to Accept.
I move to accept the donations with gratitude.
Second.
Second. Been motioned second, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Also, board members, I'll go to HD Consent Agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull? Hearing none, is there any public comments requests on this item?
No.
No, seeing none. May have a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been motioned second, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We move that. Oh, I'm moving along. Also, I want to back up a little bit, that we did have no announcements. We had no announcements from the closed session, no action in closed session was taken. So we want to be able to move that. So, okay, so I can go just quickly to an action item on action I1, the Student Board Discipline. There, if we can make a motion there?
I will make a motion to approve student discipline, education code 48918, case number 202324-11.
Second thought?
Been motioned second, please raise your hands and say aye in approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving there, what else can I move quickly to, to make sure we're good? I think the others might, some discussion. Yep. So, thank you for that, Mr. Escobedo. So if the committee members are here, you want to get yourself, come up forward and getting ready for a presentation?
Are they here?
They are here, so you just, okay. Yeah. So if you want to just kind of give us some background on it, and then we'll make sure that we're starting at seven o'clock, so. I just want you to give some background before the committee presents, so we can.
Alright, good evening. I'm honored to introduce to you this evening Dr. Michelle Pettigrew, who is the Chair of the Committee, as well as we have Ms. Brianna Serrato, who will also be here to provide the report to you this evening. Oh, Kembah, sorry. Kembah's the wing person on the left side. So, they're here to provide this, again, provide the report to you this evening. The committee itself, we've met two times already. We were supposed to give the report last, at the last meeting in November, but requested to extend that to this board meeting. So with that being said, I would like to invite our committee members.
You forgot Ms. Pilhofer too.
I did.
Sorry, I just saw you.
Yes. The glue. So, yes, and we have Ms. Pilhofer, who will also be answering questions regarding the process, and she's been a huge help with us, so, thank you.
Just know it's time certain, we're starting at 6:59, just want to be very mindful, 6:59, so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Well, first, I just want to acknowledge that I know a lot of people are here for a different action item, so I appreciate your patience with us doing this at this time. As a single mom with my son upstairs somewhere, it's really helpful for me to be able to like know when I can get him home for bedtime. So first, I would like to just say on the record that I have every confidence in my fellow committee members, including those. Sure. Here we go. Actually, I think I will go ahead and stay here. So I wanted to make sure that I called attention to our committee members who work in our schools. Their insights are invaluable, and their commitment to serve Black students is deep. The voices of our teacher committee members, two of whom are Latinx and one Black, are not any less valuable than the other members simply because the district signs their underpaid paychecks. In addition, you're very welcome. I used to be one of you. In addition, my non-Black colleagues on the committee are working with us in active allyship. This committee is a reflection of the many ethnicities who make up the Santa Barbara community, and I am grateful daily that they join us in this work of labor and love and justice. I also want to add, in case there is any questions in the community about it, but while we are ostensibly working to specifically address hateful bias and anti-black actions, we are by no means ignoring the rise in antisemitism and anti-Muslim sentiments in our country and in our state in light of recent events. None of our work is ignoring any other racial or ethnic community, but merely focusing in on this such that we can serve everyone. Alright, now I'll move into the specifics. So, work underway and ongoing. We have really tried to take the charge of thinking about this three Rs program in terms of being able to recognize, respond, and report to any sort of hateful action, bullying, et cetera, but specifically, you know, our focus obviously is in terms of how it relates to anti-black violence and words. One of the things that happened with its rollout was simply that it was kind of included in an acknowledgement to events that were happening in the community, and we wanted to make sure that it had, you know, it was addressed to all the parents via Parent Square and its own separate posts. So we have been working with district staff to make sure that communication is clear. One of the things that we've continued to work on is just making sure that there's a clear difference communicated to the public between the three Rs process and the UCP process. Anna, can you remind me the full name of the UCP, universal complaint, something? Uniform Complaint Process, thank you. I'm still learning this district's acronyms. So, we just want to make sure that families are aware of the difference and how they interact with each other, because I certainly don't know. If I don't know, I imagine I'm not the only parent in the district that doesn't. We also want to make sure that all units on school campuses that are receiving, and the district that are receiving these three-hour reports are following up with the reporting party to ensure that they were offered the UCP option. We also want to make sure that there's clarity about the process from report to closure that's consistent across school sites. And we also want to make sure that the back-end filing of that information is flagging anti-black and other protected class incidents, so that they're easier to track, so that we understand like what exactly is happening, we can track patterns at which school sites, et cetera. In part because we want to make sure that our work is targeted in terms of like what are the key areas that need addressing more immediately versus what are things that can happen in future rollouts of suggestions. Relatedly, part of our work to begin is to create a consistent and easily accessed, public-facing document that would be included in each school site's student handbook that would address procedures around reporting and responding to bullying and harassment of any kind, and that the uniform complaint procedures were, and that explanation was included in these handbooks, so that it's not like, where on the district website can I find this information? That it's just like, it will be in your handbook, and then you can just Command F or Control F if you're a Mac user, or, sorry, a PC user, and like find that information more quickly. I don't know if it's just something about educational school systems, but I think the websites are just challenging to navigate if you're not familiar with them. Separately, we have urged district staff to provide regular updates to the public, such as was done in September, about the rates of reports going through the three Rs system that are specific to anti-black and other discrimination and protected categories and classes, so that there's transparency around this process. Obviously, this would be, you know, done in a way that protects the specific parties involved, right? But we can't just, out of the desire to keep minors not mentioned in the public, not be transparent about what's going on in our system and how we're responding to it. So that process is ongoing. So some other work to begin. We're working on analyzing these comprehensive data sets that already exist so that we can make informed decisions on choosing anti-bias programs and services that are based off of the words of parents, faculty, staff, and students from the surveys that have already been done, rather than, you know, being the kind of committee that makes a new survey every year. We want to make sure we're responding to the work that's already been noted. And it just takes time to read through all of the information. And then, further work to begin in the year, in the new year. We're going to be collaborating with the district on selection of anti-bias programs and services, both for students and staff and faculty. And of course, that's an involved process, because you wouldn't be using the same thing for both, right? So that's some of the work of the new year. One of our other plans. Okay, well, I'll leave that for, sorry. Yeah, my school doesn't have fancy clickers for the humanities professors. We don't get the good stuff. Here we go. Alright. Okay, we'll leave it there. Okay, so one other thing that I wanted to add before I hand it over to my colleague is that we are wanting to make sure that as we are moving to craft a multi-year specific plan of action, that, so that this work is targeted, that we are focusing on work that will require decisions this winter and spring, so that change can actually happen in the fall, that is intentional and not kind of sprung on district staff and faculty in September or August. We want to make sure that there's plenty of lead time for everybody to actually, you know, learn the new systems and modules before the school year starts. So that'll be kind of our priority for January and February, is making those selections, so that there's time. And with that said, thank you all for your listening ears, and I'll give it over to Brianna.
Good evening.
There we go.
Good evening, I'm Brianna Serrato. I am the other elementary-level parent rep for the committee, and also wanted to point out Teresa, who is our other secondary school parent rep, is here. So, let's try this clicker. Alright, so in preparation for the next school year, 2024-2025, we are hoping that by March 2024, we'll have the improved data collected and reported to the public on anti-black incidences and other protected categories and classes, as Michelle had already mentioned. Also, we will be forming subcommittees to collaborate with equity leads on shaping school site anti-bias initiatives. By August, our goal is to have formalized the Oversight Committee as a board-recognized and approved advisory board. Also, begin providing extensive and ongoing professional learning for all staff that goes beyond the app and/or module work. Our recommendations for the board for 24-25 school year is to support dedicated and compensated time for extensive professional development in 2024-2025 for all staff that goes beyond app and module work in the following ways. Identifying and addressing blind spots and biases, or implicit bias tests. Learning and using anti-bias, anti-racist pedagogical principles. Providing culturally competent moderators to group training sessions to prevent harm. And co-craft a multi-year plan of action to build and sustain anti-bias work. And I wanted to just loop back to that first point on here, is that the reason that we're really wanting to make sure that the staff is compensated and it's dedicated, protected time for this learning is that there are so many things that are put on staff that they need to learn. There's the wit and wisdom, there's other things. And so, if you just have a professional development day, and you have to cram everything in, which ones are going to go? The curriculum, those are going to be the higher priority. So that's why I wanted to make sure that there is protected time and it's compensated, because we know the staff wants to do the work, but the problem is them being, having the time to do the work when they also have to check all these other little boxes. So, and with that, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I do know that we have a one question to speak on this item.
So we have one public commenter, it's a virtual public comment, and it is Connie Alexander. Do we have Ms. Alexander online?
Good evening, I hope you can hear me.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. First, congratulations, and thank you to Wendy Sims Moten for her continued.
Ms. Alexander, you just cut out audio.
Uh oh, okay.
I can hear you, you're coming in and out, I'm not sure.
Okay, so let me, how about that? Is that better?
No, it got a little bit worse.
Let's try, how about that? No?
It just cut out, you briefly got a little bit better.
Here?
No.
External, no? Nope?
Do you want to try hanging up and then coming back in the meeting, and we'll give it one more, we'll give it another shot?
Okay, I'll try that. Now you can hear me?
Clear.
Clear, okay, I'll talk fast, if you can hear me.
That would happen.
I'm still here.
Let me know when we have Ms. Alexander back on. Thank you all for your patience. Okay, Ms. Alexander, it looks like we have you back on. Did you give your audio a quick test?
I did, it is on my end.
Try one more time. It cut out again.
Okay, how are we doing?
No, it's still cutting out.
It's all the way up.
Do we have a phone number that she can call to give public comment? I'm sorry?
Can we try it? No?
Sandra's going to email you, Ms. Alexander, a phone number that you can call to give public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hold on, speak again, we may have this.
Okay, so let's try it.
Oh, no.
I do this all the time with you guys.
Yeah, so we'll move to board comments, and then we'll wait for her to make the.
Go to board question.
Okay. Board members, questions, please. You, Mr. Escobedo?
So I just want to start, thank you as always, a lot of gratitude for the work that you all are doing. It's the right work, we're always reminded of that. And I think when we originally, at least when I joined the board about the discussions, this is the work that the community, folks in the district, that the board had been talking about. It's exciting. It's exciting to see that we're not only focusing on the short terms, but the long term. A couple of questions that I had for you that came up during your presentation. So you had spoken about regular reports out to the community based on the statistics that we're getting about anti-blackness, but also just other incidents. What sort of vehicle were you thinking? Is it a formal board meeting? Is it some other type of communication with the community?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think it should be a two-fold communication because obviously not everyone is able to access the meetings either physically or virtually. And so while I do think that, I think we can model the, like the spoken report that Steve did in September in terms of giving a brief update on where we're at stats-wise. I think it's also important to have a dedicated, you know, anti-bias section of the district website to keep the public updated on what work is being done to address these issues. And a section of that page could be dedicated to transparency around rates of reports.
Thank you. Another question I had, actually, not necessarily a question right now to be answered, but a topic of discussion for future committee meetings would be, as we look to formalize this as an advisory committee to the board, whether or not it would be helpful to have a board member as a liaison, not as a member of the committee. So they're not, they're there as a liaison to report back to the board between each of your reports, right? You're coming to the board, I think, quarterly right now. And so more regular reports based on how you're having your meetings. That might be not productive for, for the group, but if the committee can discuss that as we're coming back to formalize your group.
Yeah, I think the committee will definitely discuss that in January and certainly at a minimum, we take pretty copious notes at our meetings. So we can certainly share a summation of what's happening at each meeting, which happens about every other month. And that would be a little more frequent than the board reports that are here in the public.
Fantastic. Again, thank you so much gratitude for all the work that you do and really looking forward to be an ally and a support for you. And I think that sentiment is shared all in the cabinet and on this board. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for what you've done. It's come a long ways since we first started this. So thank you to all of you. I know you're all busy with either, you know, your, well, with your family, with your life and with school and so forth. So appreciative. Thank you so much.
Mr. Benny.
I'll simply echo the gratitude that you're hearing from, from everyone at the board and and say how much we appreciate the effort and the time and the energy on this critically important work. Thank you very much.
Anastasia, yes.
I just had a question about reporting like incidents for students. Because like as students, you can either report it to your teacher, your, like an administrator, or like directly to the district. And I'm just like wondering, like in what scenarios would students report directly to the district or if students should be encouraged to always report to both an adult on campus and to the district, just because there are so many avenues for reporting.
So I just want to thank Anastasia for even bringing up the idea of creating a web-like link to our, like our interface on the iPad. So that allows our students to then report directly to us. So in that process, I report back to the admin. And we follow up in what is the follow-up to that action, whether it be parent involvement, an education piece, or the like. So there is a loopback to the reporting process. I hope I answered a question.
I think she was wondering if there are scenarios in which she or any student should specifically be addressing it to a, like a school site person as opposed to the district. And I, I think.
Yeah, versus the link. So I mean, my, as an educator, my suspicion would be that if you were in a situation where you were unsure if your school site has a person you trust to report it to, which is sometimes the case when you're in a minoritized group, we want the link to be available in those situations. But I do think that if you feel comfortable speaking to a trusted adult on the campus, that you are, you are encouraged to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it's a yes and.
Yeah, a yes and, not an either or.
Do we have Ms. Alexander? Are we still waiting to get her?
We do have Ms. Alexander online. We're going to give it another shot.
Okay, can you hear me? I am here.
Ms. Alexander, can you hear us?
I can. I can hear you. Can you hear me? I'm trying to dial the number too. Oh, wow.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes, can you hear me? I, I am talking.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on with that, but we certainly want to hear. So Ms. Alexander, if you can hear us, if you could submit your written comments, we'll, we'll read those. You'll make sure that we get your comments in the record and the board members hear that as well. So apologize for that. So. I think we're going to continue to move on to board members. So I know we've had you sit down to come out. You can just stay seated. You can stay seated. I just, you know, want to echo the, the comments of my board members and our students and the questions that have been asked. And I certainly want to say thank you. I think back to when we first started this in terms of it being a survey telling us what was going on in our face, so to speak, what had to change here and, and you know, what we were going to do and how we were willing to do that. So thank you for staying the course. I know it's been hard. You've given up your evenings and your time. And so I want to appreciate all that are on that, on that, on the committee and certainly all those who formed up to that committee. And I'm looking forward to formalizing it as an advisory committee. I think this is part of, going to have to be part of our fabric of who we are and as we go to change. I appreciate the tangibles that are already coming forth and the level of work that's happening. You're talking about a student handbook. You're talking about how do we improve our process and how we are updating all those things. So really appreciate the hard work that we don't often necessarily see. So thank you for that unseen work that's obviously then comes forth here. And I, you know, I just want to say we're just in difficult times. And one of the things that we set out that survey was what do we want? We wanted to change the experience for all of our students, particularly focusing on our African-American students, their experience. And so in that, then therefore changes for the whole environment. And one thing I would just leave us with is that I read somewhere that change comes at the speed of trust. So the more that we're building our trust, the more that we're going to be able to change with regards to that. And so any change has to be able to, to be trusting in the process. So thank you for, you know, trusting that we're giving you the space, giving you the resources that you need to do this work, you know, going forward. So I, I just want to say, just express my appreciation for that and thank you for your continued work in that and know that that change will happen. Change will come. So I appreciate you being here tonight and sharing us what you've been doing and looking forward to other reports. So thank you. Any final comments, board members? Thank you. Thank you for your, for being here. So we're going to move back to us. As we said before, we're going to just forego our board members' comments for now. We want to get back into our, our public comment. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. We have a few more public comments. Our first public commenter is Connie Alexander. And so I think we'll hold off on that one for a little while and see if the technology issues fix themselves hopefully. So with that, we're coming into public comment. Thank you all for being so patient. Thank you all for showing up. And I'm going to ask for a little bit of grace as I go through some of these names. I'm trying to pronounce them correctly and I'm trying to learn the names. So I appreciate the grace that I'll hopefully get. So here we go. I'm going to name a few people if you can queue up so that we can get through speakers as fast as possible. We have Brianna Serrato, followed by Megan Palmer, followed by John Dent. And everybody will get 90 seconds. I believe the light changes at 20 seconds. So if you could pay attention to that little light, I'll also give you a gentle reminder. Welcome back.
Hello, long time no see. Good evening. My name is Brianna Serrato and I am a former SB Unified student and current parent of two SB Unified students. I am also the parent rep for their school for CAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee. Anyone that has worked with neurodivergent students can attest to the importance of the students knowing they will have trusted adults in school, at school, who went away from their primary caretaker. I understand that there is a shortage of special education teachers and paraprofessionals everywhere. At the CAC meeting, Superintendent Maldonado was excited to report the latest update to the district's counterproposal in negotiations with SBTA and asked if there were any questions for her. In response to my question as to what the district is doing to be competitive with other local districts and agencies, her response highlighted that there is a HR recruiter specifically for sped staff and was so happy to bring up the recent partnership with SB Housing Authority to offer lower-income housing for SB Unified educators. While I applaud the thinking of outside-the-box idea of the project, I don't see how Dr. Maldonado and the board are proud of the fact that, per the News-Hawk article on this subject, states that about 28.5% of district employees are considered very low income and another 28.5% are considered low income. According to a survey of district employees, overall, about 63% of the employee households are in very low, low, or moderate income households, which means they make less than 120% of the area median income, which is about $101,000. Please pay our educators so that they can afford to live here and take care of our kids and not just have new faces every day.
Thank you. All right, next. Next, we have Megan Palmer, followed by John Dent.
Hi, my name is Megan Palmer. I'm a senior at Dos Pueblos High School. And I'm here because I care about my teachers, my education, and my community. Many of the people that I have looked up to most in recent years have been my hardworking and kind teachers. We all know that teachers don't do it for the money and fame, but that does not mean that they shouldn't even be paid enough to live in Santa Barbara. Paying our teachers what they deserve beyond being necessary would show them that we see their hard work and we appreciate and respect them. Beyond just the importance of a raise for our teachers and staff's sake, it would be important, it would be also be important to note the importance for our community. We, as students, will shape the future, something you, as the school district, deem is your reason for being here. You have the mission statement on your wall right behind you. We prepare students for a world that is yet to be created. You're not doing that very well right now. Our needs are not being, our needs are not being met. Seniors are not receiving the letters of recommendations essential for college. We can't run the clubs we love and care about so much. Many of us are losing the safe spaces that are normally provided by teachers' classrooms and much more. Ending the work to contract by paying our teachers what they deserve would give us back the resources and resources and role models we need to best shape the future. I call on you, the school district, to take the necessary steps for our community and pay our teachers what they deserve. And to all of my amazing teachers, thank you so much for everything you do for us students, and I hope that we can repay that by helping you get the pay and respect you deserve.
Thank you. Before John goes, next we have Moni DeWitt, followed by Marina Torres Gross. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Hi, my name is John Dent. I'm the director of the Dos Pueblos Media Pathway. I stand before you sad and deflated. 22 years ago, I moved to Santa Barbara from Canada and I chose Santa Barbara Unified and Dos Pueblos High School to start my career and raise my family. I've been blessed to feel supported and empowered to create and teach a wonderful, in a wonderful environment under site leaders such as Dave Cash, Sean Carey, and Bill Woodard. I have loved teaching thousands of students and building a world-class media program that's respected across the country. Unfortunately, in the last few years, I've been so frustrated and disillusioned with our district, making it harder to teach my students that I've considered leaving teaching and finding a job that will treat me with the respect I deserve and the pay and pay me appropriately. I didn't get into teaching, think I'd make a lot of money. Thank goodness my wife is a nurse and makes twice as much as I do. And everyone everywhere is struggling with inflation and increases. But what I don't understand is how are the neighboring school districts who live in the same economic environment able to afford to pay their staff so much better than our district? What are they doing right that allows them to provide for their teachers in a fair manner? I love my students. I don't want to leave the classroom. But when I do, I hope that those teachers who follow me can continue what has been built. But the new teachers can't afford to be here and are making the hard choice to move to other districts. In the past few years, we've lost many young, innovative, brilliant educators who wanted to start a family but couldn't even consider it because of the low pay from our district. Some teachers who chose to leave our district are moving to neighboring districts, making $20,000 more just down in Oxnard.
Thank you.
Please consider helping our teachers.
Next, we have Moni DeWitt, followed by Marina Torres Gross, followed by Carolina Bate.
Good evening, board. Hi, Gabe. Yeah, I'm here because I strongly support the teachers and as you mentioned, Board Member Sims Moten, trust change happens at the speed of trust. And what I'm observing in the community is that the trust is very low. And part of the reason for that is the delays in the negotiation, the miscommunication. Like at one point, you said it was 19%, it was really eight. And also what I've learned from former board members that the administration has consistently been giving the same raises that teachers have. But my personal concern is, yes, with the neurodiverse and the emerging multilingual students, only 8% of our EMFs are proficient in English at the end of the third grade and only 6% of those neurodiverse students, of which I am neurodiverse, are proficient at the end of the third grade. Then when you look at the A through Gs, those with neurodiversity, only 23% of them graduate with the A through Gs. So basically, you're failing this group in the third grade and you're failing them at the end of high school. And unless we te, bring our teachers the appropriate salary, the entire thing for wit and wisdom is going to go down the drain. That's $1.7 million. And they'll never learn how to read correctly without a science of reading program. Remember, I've been talking to you this for decades and you just finally figured it out? So I just want to say, if you trust everybody, we need to trust you. And also, we should have more room here. I hear so many people complain. It's all cabinet, no people. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Marina Torres Gross, followed by Carolina Bate, followed by BJ Kent or Hents?
Good evening. When I started attending the board meetings this fall, I thought surely everything would be resolved by December 13th. Today is my birthday and I was hoping I would not have to attend once again. But once again, here we are asking that the district present us with a reasonable salary increase, one that is not based on what I call magical math. Happy teachers create a solid school district. Teachers are the foundation of a school district. If teachers are unhappy and feel unappreciated, no amount of new programs put in place will make our school district a better place for students. I teach preschool. Even preschoolers know that 20 is a greater number than 13. I respectfully ask the district to come to the table with a more reasonable salary increase, which we all deserve. Now I'm going to home, to go home with my family to celebrate my birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday and welcome to Caroline Bate, followed by BJ, I think it's Hent, maybe Kent. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you regarding content from the Comprehensive Health Curriculum. From chapter 20, the book teaches, poor prenatal care can lead to serious health conditions for the, quote, unborn child. And prenatal care is necessary to ensure the health of the developing baby. In these actual textbook definitions, we see the accurate descriptive words being used, unborn child and developing baby. And yet, in chapter 20, abortion is taught as a procedure to end a pregnancy. By every, every observation and even taught by the textbook itself, the unborn baby is a living, breathing, growing person. So how can it be that abortion, ending the life of the baby, is taught as an acceptable option? So how can it be that abortion, ending the life of the baby, is taught as an acceptable option? Since the baby is a person and abortion kills the baby, by transference, does that not mean that we are teaching that murder-
Twenty seconds.
-is acceptable? Of course, no school would ever teach that student, teach students that murder is okay. And yet, how can abortion be explained? How does a living, breathing, growing baby go from being alive to being dead at the end of the procedure-
Thank you.
-to end a pregnancy?
Next we have BJ Hentz, followed by Kana Thomson, followed by Liz Caruso.
Hi, my name is BJ Lent-
Lentz, sorry. Can we restart the clock, I interrupted? Sorry about that.
That's okay. My name is BJ Lent and I am currently a toddler teacher at Santa Barbara High School Early Years Toddler Center. I have also taught infants and preschoolers at various sites throughout the Santa Barbara Unified Early Ed Program. Our program is often forgotten and ignored by the district at Professional Development Day and in Communications. We have our own pay scale that is even lower than the certificated pay scale even though most of our ECE teachers have the same qualifications as elementary teachers. We have our own unique set of requirements from the CDE such as completing orientations for each family before their student starts. In August, we have to squeeze the orientations in on our teacher workdays. That means most of us come in during the summer or on weekends unpaid to prepare for our classroom. We also conference with every family twice a year, but unlike elementary, we are provided no additional paid time to complete the conferences. We have to do them before or after school. This takes up all of our prep time for weeks and all the preparation we still have to do for our class is done on our own time, unpaid. We ask that when you negotiate, you remember that we exist and for years we have been required to provide unpaid labor to meet the CDE requirements for state preschools, infant and toddler programs. We ask that you respect our time, experience and expertise and provide paid time to do all parts of our jobs, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Kana Thomson, followed by Liz Caruso, followed by Amelia Kelly. Do we have Kana Thomson? Okay, thank you. We will move on to Liz Caruso.
And this is one of my students, Haven, that just happened to show up who wanted to stand with me.
Thank you, welcome.
My name is Liz Caruso, I've been teaching at Monroe School Music for the past 13 years. If my name sounds familiar, it's because I'm the Santa Barbara County Performing Arts Teacher of the Year 2021. The recommendations that garnered me that award barely spoke about my abilities to teach music. Instead, they attested to the outstanding community and young people that grow in my classroom environment. They referenced my relentless pursuit to model honesty, integrity, compassion and encouragement. Our students and families are watching the way you treat us. I urge you to demonstrate the same altruism, transparency and integrity to us as we do to our students. Parents wrote about the way I went above and beyond to help students inside and outside of the classroom whether they asked for help or not. We teachers are explicitly asking for your help to be able to do a better job serving our students. So far, you've met us with only a scrap of support. They said I make all children feel valued, seen and like an integral part of our school community. If your teachers can work all the miracles they currently do under the demoralizing conditions we experience, imagine what we could achieve from, for the district if we knew you believed and supported in us. I want to tell you about one time that I myself actually had to apply for a waiver. A former student of mine fell into a bad place, she was a drug addict who led herself into juvenile hall and when she was back at her home on house arrest, I applied to her parole officer to take her off her parents' property for a night to see Gustavo Dudamel conduct the LA Philharmonic. It was an act of love and adfor, affirmation. You too applied for a waiver, but instead of asking special permission to help, you or encourage, support-
If you could finish your thought.
-you ask special allowance to take advantage of and underplay, underpay your employees. Please adjust your hearts and agendas so that they're not so different from ours this holiday season.
Thank you. Next. Next we have Amelia Kelly, followed by Victor Breen, followed by Charles Clow. Welcome Amelia.
Good evening, I wanted to bring up a new take on this issue of teacher pay and I first just wanted to start off by saying how dare you for treating teachers this way. I am mentally ill. That is, as a teenager, there is a mental health crisis going on and existing in our community. And whether it's due to increased awareness about these issues or if it's have something to do with our environment, this is an issue and all of you know it. You plaster posters around all our schools, you offer us tons of resources and yet the most impactful thing will always be our teachers. There are good teachers and there are bad teachers and there are teachers who are just teachers. And all of them make an impact. I've had teachers who have called me worthless and made me cry in front of my classes when I was at my lowest points. And yet, I can't blame them because they work for almost no pay for what is worth their, like for what they are doing every single day. They work more than they are paid for. And the good teachers, they are who saved my life. I had a math teacher who was the reason I am still here today. I've had so many good teachers. So this holiday season, please try to have a bit of a Scrooge moment and realize what you've done. And if not, I hope you are visited by the teachers of Christmas past, present and future-
Thank you.
-to realize what you have done. Pay teachers better if you care about the students.
Thank you. Next we have Victor Breen, followed by Charles Clow, followed by Joel Block. Victor Breen?
Welcome. Hi, I'm Victor Breen and I'm here to ask you to pay my wife a livable wage commensurate with her education and experience. I'm here so she can have dinner and cuddle time with our five-year-old son this evening. I'm certain all the teachers behind me would prefer to be with their own families tonight instead of here, having to fight way too hard for fair and reasonable compensation for the outstanding work that they do every day. My wife loves teaching at Dos Pueblos and she loves her students. Anastasia, she said to give you and your peers in her English classes a shout-out. In just the last two years, my wife has built curriculum for three new courses, working hard to ensure it's rigorous, engaging and relevant to students. My understanding is that the district pays millions for curriculum from outside sources, but my wife is building it with no additional compensation. When she's not designing courses for free at home, she's grading papers, she's planning her daily lessons. Why is she typically doing all this work at home? During her prep time, she's attending IEP meetings, calling students' families to check in, answering a ton of emails and tutoring students. Elementary teachers do similar things with no prep period at all. Please stop insulting the students and the community by undervaluing the teachers. Protect your budget by giving them a raise, but keeping district admin salaries the same. It's not unreasonable for teachers to want to be able to pay their bills too, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Charles Clow, followed by Joel Block, followed by Elvia Hernandez. Welcome.
Good evening, howdy everyone. My name is Charles. I'm in my ninth year as a social studies teacher, seven of those years have been spent here in Santa Barbara Unified. I'm an excellent teacher. My spouse is also a teacher who is even better at it than I am. We think we'd be excellent parents, but under the district's current salary schedule, it isn't financially feasible to expand our family. For almost a decade, we've given a great deal to this community. We shouldn't have to choose between growing our family or leaving our home. My partner and I want to stay. We like it here, but our family's dreams remain out, if our family's dreams remain out of reach, we'll leave. Just like the hundreds of teachers who were already forced out by the conditions that you perpetuate by not acting in teachers' best interest. If your words aligned with your actions, we would have had a deal already. Your negotiators bargain on your support. Session after session, they make offers on salary that simply aren't serious or legitimate in terms of attracting and keeping teachers. Educators throughout the district are deciding, right now, whether to leave or not, just like they did last year and the year before. You have it in your power to keep us here. We don't want to be in this room tonight. Everyone behind me has already done their job today. Yet here we are, standing in front of folks who say that they support teachers, that they value students, that they care about this community and the quality of education that its youth receives. Please make your actions align with your words and do your jobs, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Joel Block, followed by Elvia Hernandez, followed by Angel Hernandez, welcome.
Good evening, I love Santa Barbara, I love my job teaching, I love my school, my fellow teachers and my students. Yet in my 41-plus years as an educator, I have never worked with a district so dysfunctional, so untrustworthy, so disdainful of teachers as this one. That is not to say that the district never gets anything right. After all, even a blind squirrel finds an acorn once in a while. This year we learned that the district underpaid teachers by $6.7 million. While bothersome, what is more disturbing is that the district, with the board's approval, had the hubris to ask for a waiver so it would not have to correct that mistake. Hu, hubris comes from the Greek meaning excessive pride, often combined with arrogance. The members of this board were elected to supervise and give direction to the district superintendent and district administrators. Either you have abrogated your authority or you agree with the district plan to resist paying its teachers a fair salary with its public campaign of misinformation, obfuscation and disingenuousness. For this, you should be ashamed. We will not back down from our demands to be paid fairly. We will not back down, we will not back down, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Elvia Hernandez, followed by Angel Hernandez, and followed by Paige Hiller Adams. Welcome.
Dear Santa Barbara School Board Members and Administrators, it is with sincerity and a heavy heart that I write this letter to express my disappointment and dismay on the occurring teacher situation. I would like to take a minute to introduce myself, my name is Angel Hernandez, I am a second-generation Santa Barbara school student. I am currently a sophomore at Santa Barbara High School. I was born and raised in Santa Barbara and throughout my school years, I have many amazing memories of most of my teachers. Every teacher that I've had has helped me in any way they possibly can and I truly believe that as a student in this generation who is not afraid about being heard, it is my turn to express myself in order to help all my teachers. Although I may be young, this is not my first disagreement with the school board that has and would affect my education. In no form of disrespect, I question many solutions and actions done by the school board, but I've stayed quiet. But, when you implicate the learning of my fellow students and I in the equation, that silence gets broken very quickly. You claim that the students are the first priority, but you deliberately attack our learning by the continuous decisions that are made without taking in consideration the teachers, student families, but most important, us students.
Twenty seconds.
Your decisions impact our education, learning and future. You seem to ignore the fact that the people that are influencing us are the teachers. They are the solution to a better generation, they are the cornerstone of our learning. The evidence becomes so transparent, especially from my experience and the teachers that I've had the pleasure of learning from. And the sheer amount of teachers who buy supplies for their class that come out of pocket is unfathomable. There are teachers who create fundraisers-
Please finish your thought. Okay.
Great, no, I'm lost. There are teachers who create fundraisers and ask for donations in order to give students the best environment for learning. This has been a reoccurring nightmare for teachers and definitely not the first time I've heard of it. All this time I spend in school, I always praised teachers for choosing such a rewarding job and I wanted to be a teacher, until I was discouraged by the monumental downside, the low pay. So many teachers don't do this job for the money, they do it for the passion and the reward to know that they are helping shape the future of this generation into the utopia we have all imagined. Although this may seem the greatest reward of all, the cold dystopian truth arises and shows the stress being put on each teacher of living paycheck to paycheck in order to maintain a somewhat steady lifestyle. Some teachers have to resort to working another job and they work extra hours without getting paid. My highest respect for those teachers and the grit that they have when facing many obstacles that are in their path that they know of. Yet their passion and dedication that they have for teaching is greater. Teachers work with no administration support. They have to teach big classes, some filled with more than 30 students and not ideal work environments. When I speak of not ideal work environments, for example, when it's hot outside, the classrooms have no AC, so you have to rely on windows and fans. But with the classes of large sizes, that can only go, only go so far. Not to criticize your job and its difficulty, but I have never heard of an administrator having to deal with these challenges. I can't recall the last time I heard an administrator having to fight for an increase in their wage. I don't know if my understanding is wrong, but it seems unjust when I know that there are teachers that are the foundation of a school's success, yet they are not being paid for their deserved amount. Like I stated previously, I stay perplexed on why and how I've never heard of these issues at the administration level.
Thank you. Next we have, I'm guessing Angel Hernandez donated time, I, we typically don't do that, but we- Paige Hiller Adams is next, followed by Kim Barron, followed by Deborah Reed. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm a community member, two children in their mid-30s now who received excellent educations from elementary school through high school here in the Santa Barbara School District. I'm puzzled by our situation at this point. It seems that we're living in two different worlds in terms of our school district, so important to our community. Everyone knows someone who has children or has children themselves, some 13,000 students involved and over 600 teachers, it's a large community. Education is really, and the sense of it, is really at one of the key cores of a community. We now find ourselves at loggerheads. Clearly, the speakers before are addressing that. What I'm puzzled by is the sense of the two different worlds and the antagonism between them. Teachers can teach by standing in a class and teaching, administrators can't administrate without the teachers. The administrator's job, of course, is to enable the teachers to do what they were hired to do. Similarly, within the board, we keep using the term trusted adult. A trusted adult is one who speaks truth and is reliable. The puzzle to me is the lack of trans-
Twenty seconds.
Thank you, the lack of transparency. Why was a waiver for $6.7 million applied for? How is it that two different fundings for career training for Ms. Maldonado were approved and that the lack of trust in the community has resulted in the hiring of a firm at $275 an hour with no cap to find out why so many people are leaving? We need transparency and honesty, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Kim Barron, followed by Deborah Reed, which will be followed by, I just have a first name, Greg. Welcome.
Good evening, in the past three years, the inflation rate has been about 18%. We've gotten an 8% increase since 2021. If you had given us a 10% raise this year, we would be even with inflation. That is not a pay raise, which as you don't seem to know, is paying people more than the cost of inflation. Your offer of 9%, which was insulting, as was the previous one, doesn't even begin to close the gap between the cost of living in Santa Barbara and our low salaries. You compared us to other districts that are also going to get raises and who despite having lower housing costs make more than us right now and will continue to make more than us, like Lompoc. In fact, all the districts you compared us to in your own survey put us at the bottom. Why didn't you compare us to districts with similar cost of livings or even Golita? Your survey was very disingenuous and we can see through this. So how do you pay for our raises? Stop paying district admin to live and travel here during the week. Stop paying for consultants. Eliminate positions that were created by this administration-
Twenty seconds.
-such as a COO who makes $274,000 a year. Consolidate positions that used to be done by one person and that are now done by multiple people, like Student and Family Services. And do not, and you're not doing anything but draining the budget further. The executive board should also decline raises next year since your raises will be in excess of $20,000.
Thank you.
The censoring of parents- The censoring of parents, retroactively asking for waivers, not explaining the travel budget, and people have gone through the Freedom of Information Act to ask about this travel budget, and the lawyers have not given it yet. These are all reasons why there's no trust between the district and school board and your staff and students, and you need to do better, and all of you, I hope, are not elected next time when we have elections. You all need to go.
Thank you. All right, folks. Before Ms. Reed goes up, I'm trying to let people finish their thoughts as we approach the end of the minute thirty, and just please don't put me in the position where I have to interrupt you. Please try and respect that so everyone gets an equal voice. Thank you. So, we have Deborah Reed, followed by Greg, followed by Kay, and I can't read the last name. Cantu, thank you. Welcome.
My name's Deborah Reed. This is my twenty-third year in the district. I'm a special education teacher. I work with students who are diagnosed with emotional disturbance. Over the course of the past few weeks, I have been approached by students who have questions about what is happening with the adults. They've asked me, are the teachers and their bosses arguing? When responding, I have been careful to avoid disparaging any of the involved parties because the example that I want to set for my students, the message that I want to convey is that we, all of us, are unified in our desire to provide them, the students, with the best educational experience possible. I fear that despite my efforts to express that we, adults, share this common interest, the students are perceiving the underlying tension. I fear that the students perceive a dissonance between the statement that the adults are working collaboratively and cooperatively and the reality of what they see in their daily lives. I find myself asking, what is our, all of us, our end goal? What is it that we, the adults of the Santa Barbara community, value and desire for our students?
Twenty seconds.
When we, the adults assembled here, say that our collaborative goal is to prepare students for a future that has yet to been created, does that mean that we would like to see them thrive in that future? Or do we merely wish for them to be able to survive it? I live on the east side, and some of my students live in a garage next door to me. They're surviving, they're not thriving.
Thank you.
If it's, if the former is true, that we wished for them to thrive, our true collaborative goal is to foster academic growth and social-emotional well-being, how does the current state of discontent between the frontline personnel and those who determine the policies and procedures move us closer to this end result?
Thank you.
Parents who are here tonight, teachers, parent educators, school nurses, health techs, administrative support staff, cafeteria worker, grounds crew, coaches, speech therapists, are all showing up on a daily basis and doing everything in our power to ensure that our students thrive.
Thank you. I appreciate your public comment.
I appreciate you being here, too. The community of Santa Barbara now looks to you, our policymakers, our procedure implementers, our practice monitors, and ask, how will you collaboratively with the rest of our team? Because we are a community team. How will you work with us collaboratively to take action which will ensure that our students thrive merely then survive?
Thank you.
And I don't mean to be disrespectful, I just need the time.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg, followed by Kay Cantu, followed by Moni Dewit. Uh, Moni Dewit? Yeah, okay, sorry about that. Welcome.
Okay. I have, there were two reports came out this week from K Y T Independent News, very disturbing to us in the community. There's a twenty-five-million-dollar lawsuit was settled by Santa Barbara Union School District for they allowed a man named Mr. Sell to groom and molest boys for two years. Okay? Now, I'm not going to go into any detail. I suggest you read both articles, if you already haven't, and the rest of you. The shocking thing was that the jury, this is the jury, found that eighty percent of the fault or of the reasons that this man was allowed to molest these boys was because of the administration. The administration was found to be eighty percent at fault. Eighty, this is not, this is from the jury, this is an opinion, okay? So, the parents had filed multiple complaints for, and they were ignored. The, the pedophile had assaulted one of his own, uh, the boys he was grooming. And, and what happened was, nobody reported it, it was supposed to be a mandatory reporting incident. So, we need the, you guys, to investigate this case, and all those administrators who were responsible, eighty percent at fault, need to be disciplined or fired because this happens here, it's happened with the Math Academy, and all these administrators go scot-free.
Thank you.
We pay the, the twenty-five-million-dollar-
Thank you.
-settlement, so I want you guys to do that.
Thank you. Kay Cantu, followed by Amanda Rios, followed by Josby Galindo. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I stand before you as an employee of this district for twenty-six years. In nineteen ninety-seven, I was hired to teach ten kids to read and write in English, ten kids to read and write in Spanish. I used blue chalk for English, pink chalk for Spanish. Most incredible year of my life. Since that time, things have changed, and that's okay, I can go with that. The problem is, is that what has not changed is your ability to want to pay us what we are worth. Do you understand that in nineteen ninety-seven, what I rented, I can no longer rent today? And I have one child, and he is your JV, nosotros goalkeeper, and I cannot afford to spend money on meat for an athletic person in your school district because I have to be careful, because I have healthcare that I need to pay for. This is a small community.
Twenty seconds.
I am so blessed to have been born and raised as my family, my husband's family, fourth generation. We talk. This community talks, and we know, and we share information. And here's the problem, you're not listening, but there's a lot of community out there who are done, and we want and demand your help.
Thank you. We have Amanda Rios, followed by Josby Galindo, followed by Finnegan Wright. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Amanda Rios. I am a parent of two students at Adam, Adams Elementary who have been there for the past eight years. I'm here today to show support for our teachers and the proposals made by S B T A. The counteroffer made by the district yesterday falls short of meeting the crucial needs of our educators and, by extension, our students. This district's budget should be restructured to place students and teachers at its core, enabling the district to offer the salaries, benefits, and work environment necessary to attract and retain the high-quality educators our students deserve. It's hard to ignore the increase in retirements the past few years, or how teachers and staff are leaving the district because they can't afford to live here and the commute is not worth it. I see the look of fatigue on our teachers' faces and that have to commute from other cities more than forty-five minutes away, or how tired they are from other jobs they have to work just to make a living, and I wonder to myself, how much longer can they do this? I couldn't do it. When these educators leave because they find better-paying jobs, and they will, we can't fill their positions because the pay is terrible and the workload is too much. That means the work and caseload left on the plates of those that do stay is too much, and they're burnt out. It means that students are not receiving the supports and quality of education they require and deserve. I, myself, with a student with special needs, has been told if he gets more resources, it gets taken from another student. That's not just wrong, it's illegal. The success of our students is intrinsically tied to the quality and dedication of our educators. By investing in our teachers, we invest in the future success of our students and the entire community.
Thank you. We have Josby Galindo, followed by Finnegan Wright, followed by Kim Tilton. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, Superintendent, and Cabinet. This district has not only a legal obligation to provide students with free and adequate public education, but also a moral and ethical obligation to provide faith to its students. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the educators that give more than a hundred percent to ensure that students receive the education and support they are entitled to. We've tried to help our community understand that teachers go beyond what is expected of them through some of our actions, but there's more to tell. I've had the privilege of visiting all of our schools this year. Teachers have shared their successes and struggles with me. I want to highlight what teachers do for children of this district. Math teachers are taking on the responsibility of teaching extra classes so that students have access to the subject. Rural language teachers do the same. We have TK teachers that have to teach at a ratio of eighteen to one when the legal ratio is twelve to one. We have teachers in the alternative education space that are teaching before eight-thirty and finishing after three P M. without a lunch or prep period so that they meet the needs of their students. These are but some examples of the dedication our educators show our students on a daily basis. They are improving students' lives by sacrificing their own mental health and pushing themselves to exhaustion.
Twenty seconds.
By doing this, they made H R. and the district administration's life easier by not forcing you to find more personnel to help meet your legal responsibilities. This is not sustainable. Teachers will burn out, leaving even more positions to be filled. This is why we continue to show up and ask that you create a truly competitive salary schedule that will retain and attract teachers to our district. Teachers do right by students, and I ask that you do your best to do right by the teachers that dedicate themselves to the children of this community.
Thank you.
One more second, just one more thing. If anyone has come to speak at this or any other board meeting and has shown emotion, it's because we are struggling to survive in this city, and that is very emotional to us. Thank you.
Finnegan Wright? Welcome. Is the green light on?
Uh, yeah, okay, it's on now.
There you go.
Right. Hi, my name is Finnegan Wright. I'm a senior at Dos Publics High School. I came here about a month ago to speak on the issue of teacher pay and how they need a lot more. And in the months since then, a lot has happened. At Dos Publics, we saw the students walking out. At San Marcos, we saw them walking out. At Santa Barbara, we saw them walking out. At Lacalina, we saw them walking out. It is incredible to see what our students can do when we see injustice in our community, and I've been proud to be able to participate in these events. But then I come back here today, and I still see around me so many disappointed faces, so many angry faces, so many signs covered in rage. Why is that? Why are they still so unhappy? I, I try to keep up with the, the bargaining and hear what the updates are, and it sounds like there's progress that's being made, but clearly it's not being made fast enough. Our teachers know what they need, and that's what they deserve. You need to give them what they're asking for. That's the right thing to do. So, you have two choices. You have the right thing and the wrong thing. The right thing is to give them what they deserve, and we can all go home. But if you do the wrong thing, then the teachers will come back, the students will keep walking out.
Twenty seconds.
I, I said at, at the Dos Publics walkout, I said, students, we can move mountains, and I strongly believe that. This isn't a mountain we have to move. This is an easy, right or wrong decision. So, make the right decision because I don't want to have to come back, some, come back here after winter break. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kim Tilton, followed by Carla Hernandez, followed by York Shingle. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. Hi, um, thanks for having me. So, I want to tell you a story about my friend who's a colleague and I, he's a really busy guy, and so to make time, we'll run errands together. And this was a couple weeks ago, and I said, hey, can we go to Target first? And he's like, sure. Brings his daughter with him, who I love, and we're walking the aisles, and we're picking out our groceries, and I can tell he's like acutely paying attention to how much everything costs on his list. And he turned to me and asked, like, hey, can you find the cereal that comes in the bags? And I was like, cereal that comes in bags? And then I realized, like, this is not where he meant to be shopping, and he was like doing me a favor. And I said, hey, man, like, we don't have to shop here. And he's like, yeah, like, can we just go to Smart and Final, please? And I said, yeah, of course. We then, together, walked through the store with his daughter and restocked the shelves with all the groceries that were in his cart, and then we met at the Smart and Final together where I shopped with him. And that's where he admitted to me that when they decided to have a second child, they've been in the red every month. Their childcare's thirty-four-hundred a month. His wife can't do childcare because they need the insurance from her job because ours is so expensive. He's so talented, bilingual, teaches a bunch of different classes. If we lose him, like, it's a critical piece to our team, our team, and I can't, I don't want to work in a place where I can't look at my friends and my colleagues and encourage them to stay anymore. That's why I'm so active this year in the union. So, I'm just begging you, like, keep our team together, like, be creative, do what you can do, please.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Carla Hernandez, followed by York Shingle, followed by Brett Larson. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's see if I can stay on script. I always write something and then I go off the cuff because I get so passionate when I'm here listening to the speakers. But, so, thank you for opening negotiations, but I wanted to urge you to address all the parts of the items that are brought forth to you with the urgency that they deserve. I wanted to let you know, right, that this room is filled with people that care about students, and, I mean, the board expresses this, the district expresses this, and the teachers express this all the time, and I, I'm also just concerned at why, if we have the same concern, we can't come, you know, to like terms, right? I do believe that we, Santa Barbara Unified, the teachers, we are Santa Barbara Unified. We are the ones that are there, you know, on the front lines with the students. We are Unidos, we're together. We're motivated toward one goal, and that's student success, student success. So, we teachers are united, and we are actually inviting you to come alongside of us and join us in what, you know, what our heart is, which is, again, the students. So, board members, right, and cabinet members, please join us. I see so many faces here, and, like, these people, I see you, and I want to be able to smile, and I want us to be able to work together, right? You're not different from me, you're not my enemy, right? We're together, somos Unidos, right, for our students and for our community. So, I, please stop this, right? Let's just come to an agreement so that we don't keep hurting our community. Really, my heart just breaks a little bit as I hear the different comments and the students, and I, I hope that you're just as touched and moved, and I'm totally off script now, so anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have York Shingle, followed by Brett Larson, followed by Rich Lashwa. Did I say that okay? All right. Is York coming from the back? Is, okay. You can walk, you can walk. Take your time, take your time.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. It's hard to hear you in the third room in the bathroom.
Take your time. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for reaching the tentative agreements on health insurance and class sizes. We appreciate it. Now, we just need you to also pay us more. But don't listen to me. Listen to our community. Listen to our students. Thank you to Anastasia Lee for including them in your report. None of the adults have. Listen to the hundreds of high school students, and as of today, junior high students as well, who've marched out of their schools to demand better pay for teachers. As you heard from Finnegan, who also came tonight. This is huge. I went through these schools as a student, and I can't think of another time that students mobilize and organize like this. Our students are incredible. But our leadership refuses to listen. When the students at D P. shut down your offer to walk with them, you still could have gone to Gersh Park to listen to them. You could have gone to Tucker's Grove to hear what the Royals had to say. Yesterday, you could have just stepped outside of your office to hear the Dons pour their hearts out, but you didn't, and you're not, and it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable that students are speaking out, and our district leadership isn't interested in listening. You make them come to a meeting where the structure doesn't allow you to respond. That's not what community leaders do. Teachers deserve better pay, that's true, but our students deserve leadership that cares about them, listens to them, and responds to them. We claim every child, every chance, every day, and we talk about the importance of relationships in this district, but what kind of relationships are you building behind a closed door?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Brett Larson, followed by Rich Lashwa, followed by Rogue Lindsay.
I'm here again like last month to remind you that at Santa Barbara Junior High, 7th graders cannot take music unless they show up for zero period. And then they get to be in a class of marching band, drum line, beginning band, advanced band, and whatever other kind of instrument. Oh, orchestra, let's throw some violins in the jazz band, marching band. It doesn't work. Today, I had three kids say, "This isn't working for me. I need to drop this." They're not happy because that doesn't work. You would not ask a PE teacher, or a coach, rather, to do football, basketball, soccer, all in the same field at the exact same time with one coach. Doesn't work. You can solve this problem. You didn't make it. It's been coming for a while. I've been talking about it for three years, but it's like, "Oh, go recruit." Well, I'm recruiting. I teach at four elementary schools. I can't recruit to a class, to no classes. We need a change at Santa Barbara Junior High. We need a big change. We need a seven-period day. And you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Rich Lashwa, followed by Rogue Lindsey, followed by Andrew Suthard. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado and members of the board. I'm addressing a crisis that this board did not create, but could still solve. One generation ago, the 7th period was removed from the junior high bell schedule in a temporary cost-saving measure. Every remaining arts program that thrives today only does so outside the traditional school day. Students of color and low economic status have lost the most access to these electives. These marginalized students declined in test scores and nearly tripled the rate of chronic absenteeism in the last five years. This is an equity issue. Seven-period days guarantee all students access to an elective, keeping our most vulnerable students off the streets and supervised in classes they chose, learning valuable career skills. Over the last decade, four consecutive district VAPA coordinators and last year's VAPA steering committee all recommended restoring the 7th period to revitalize our schools. Increasing salaries does not have to mean allowing the arts to die. To my colleagues in the union, we insist every junior high student deserves a robust choice of electives. Reinstiting a seven-period day would be about a fifth of that 6.7 million. The district has an opportunity to not only reconcile with the union, but restore public trust and preserve precious programs in the process. After salary negotiations are complete and teachers are no longer paid like second-class citizens, the union has the opportunity to finally stop treating some of its own like second-class teachers and welcome them back into the common schedule.
Thank you.
Sometimes, when you're on the wrong path, a U-turn is the best solution. I truly hope that both sides can agree on this as soon as possible. The future of our kids can never afford to wait.
Thank you. We have Rogue Lindsey, followed by Andrew Suthard, followed by Anamoni Metta. Feel free to correct me, please. Welcome.
Hi. So I'm sure most people haven't seen my face, because I've been a student at DP and SB Unified for about three months now. And I have a question for the board. How many people here are from LA or have worked in LAUSD? Because we had a, because I came from there, right? And it's the same issue. Everyone's getting paid very, very poorly, and I'm just curious, like, why, right? Like, if you can short people $6.4 million, right? That means you had $6.4 million to short. Seven. Seven. Oh, my God. Wow. That's about a million dollars off. That's crazy. So why? I'm just curious, right? If it was an issue at my last school, why is it an issue here? It costs more to live here. And why can't the district match that? We, I have seen teachers come and go. I've been to quite a few different schools. Thank you. I've been to quite a few different schools, and it's been a consistent issue. And I've seen teachers come and go, and Santa Barbara is the first place that has opened up very early on for me to make friends, join clubs and everything. I'm more involved than I ever thought I would be at a school.
You can finish your thought.
Yeah. And that's all because of the teachers. It's, and frankly, without them, I don't think I would have the friends I have, the connections I have. And I'm just, I've never seen you guys before, and I'm frankly disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Suthard, followed by Anamoni Metta, followed by Jack Reedman. Welcome.
So the teachers say that they're underpaid. Do you believe them? We students say that this is a problem. Do you believe us? How many people does it take saying it before you take it seriously? Or do you? I would like to think that you do. I sincerely hope you do. But personally, I've almost become desensitized to people coming up here and saying the same thing, because I've heard it so many times. A minute. Okay, I can't make my next point. What else was I going to say? Oh, yeah. I don't mean to villainize you, because you have done that yourselves. I don't want to see you as villains. You're the school board. You're on the same side as me. You've united Dos Publos and San Marcos and every other group that doesn't like each other. At the walkout, there were people that disagree with me on a lot of issues, people that I've had arguments over abortion rights with, people that I've heard using racial and homophobic slurs at the school. And those people all agree on one issue. They all agree that their teachers should be paid fairly. Twenty seconds. Please don't tell me "thank you" when I leave, because you have nothing to thank me for. "Thank you" is a sacred term. "Thank you" is what I said to my coach when he told me that I should be one of the captains on the track team this year. "Thank you" is what I say to my mom when she puts food onto my plate. You have nothing to thank me for, and when you say "thank you" to me, it makes it sound insincere every time you actually mean it. Thank you sincerely for letting us all speak here. And thank you for hopefully listening.
Thank you for your public comment. Anamoni, followed by Jack Reedman.
Okay, we're back here. Why? What? I didn't prepare for this one either. Why am I back here? What are you doing? What have you done in the past month? Like, I got a smile out of you last time, but it's not going to work again, I see, because you're just sadder than before. So procrastination. Procrastination is a great topic. It's what happens when you don't want to do something and you're supposed to, and you just keep doing other things instead. So I'm assuming you guys have been doing other things in this past month, like failing to actually follow through with going to a walkout. That one was fun. What have you been doing in this time? You've had so much time. If I didn't do my work for this long, I would be failing all my classes. You have finance, like personal finance class teachers in the teachers' union, and they tell you that they need a certain amount of money to live. You pay them to teach, well, you don't pay them, to teach students how to do that. When they say they need a certain amount of money to live, either you shouldn't have them teaching the class, or you should give them that amount of money, because then they know what they're talking about. This paper's blank, by the way.
Twenty seconds.
I know. Womp, womp. So you guys, also, why is it 90 seconds again? That's weird. I don't want to come back here again. I'm doing my work. I've done my college apps. I'm working on those essays. You work on actually doing your damn job.
Thank you for your public comment. Jack Reedman.
All right, folks. I'm going to keep this brief. The students support the teachers. We will continue to walk out and engage in other activities until this is made right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last public speaker is a virtual public speaker. It's Connie Alexander. Is Con... Okay, she's not online. Thank you. So, Madam President, that is the end of public comment.
Okay. Thank you, board members. How are we doing? That concludes public comments, and now we're going to take about a five-minute break. I'll make it 10 minutes. Yes. Thanks. Thank you. Call us back to order, and the first order is on our action agenda. We'll be moving to I-2. Ms. Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we are going to be talking about the first interim budget. And what we've tried to do, we've done some new things this go-round. You all received the very large packet, and it's a lot of fun to read. I understand. There are a lot of parts in it that we are required to do, because it's what the state requires us to do. Most of it is, the back section is all what state required. But that's really hard reading, and sometimes it's kind of difficult to understand. So we're trying to do our best to make our budget very accessible to people and to provide different tools to hopefully help people to be able to understand it. So for that, we created something brand new. This is called the Fast Fiscal Facts, and we attached that on the board item as well. I'm not going to show that tonight, but it's kind of a, more of a snippet to kind of give people an understanding of what's in the budget and make it hopefully easy for everybody to understand. And then we have this presentation tonight. So it's three different ways to try to hopefully make our budget easy to understand for folks. And hopefully, that'll be helpful. I'd love to hear if anybody has an idea if they like it or not. There we go. So this is also new. This is kind of the annual budget. It's a fiscal cycle, kind of like the cycle of life, showing how we work in the school finance side of things. And you can kind of go around, and it just keeps going in a circle every year. Right now, we're in December, so we're at the first interim, the financial report, and it says we are here. All the little stars on there that are kind of a greenish color, those are the board reports that we are required to bring to you and have you approve throughout the year. This one we have brought before. I might retire it after we do that circle of life thing. But it shows you where we are in green there, the first interim. It is for the bills that have been paid through October and what we, and any encroachments, not encroachments, any encumbrances that we have, so bills that we're expecting to pay. And then we do our projections through the rest of the year and then the next two years. We are required to get this approved by December 15th, so we're here tonight, December 13th, getting it done. So what is a first interim budget? Remember, our 2324 adopted budget was based on May revise, and so May revise is when the governor revises the state budget in May. And it was approved by the school board on 6/27. And then after that, when the state budget was completed, we did a 45-day kind of an update of that adopted budget, so you guys could see where we were at that point. And now this is where we are with our bills through October and what we are projecting for the rest of the year. So these are, we'll just kind of show you what some of the changes are. So the biggest changes are the updates in property tax funding, which is good news. In June, when we did the adopted budget, we asked the tax assessor of the county, you know, what the AV or what the assessed value of the property taxes would be for the year. And they told us that the estimate was about 5.25%. So when we talk about those percentages, it's the growth from one year to the next. So at the end of last year, they projected for us that this current year, our growth in property taxes would be 5.25%. In November, we've received our first increment, and the Santa Barbara County Tax Assessor has estimated that that is going to, has increased. So now we're looking at 5.64%. Just a note here, our official numbers for the district won't be reported until August of 2024. So property taxes, unlike an LCFF district who receives apportionments every single month, we receive property taxes in chunks throughout the year, and the last piece comes in at the end of the year. So we will not know what that AV percent will be until the end of the year. But this is a good educated assessment from our tax assessor. So that's included in our first interim. Also, what is included is that 2% additional unilateral raise in salaries that we did report to you at the 45-day budget update, and so that is now built into the budget. Okay, so this is just kind of a, sort of an easier way to look at our total reserves, our total revenues. So we are expected to receive $227.6 million in funding in the general fund, unrestricted and restricted funds. And that's from the different sources. You can see the federal government, the federal government is kind of close to what we receive in our, just our local revenue. It's a very small percentage of the total. And then we, the next amount is the $25.7 million from the state. But as you can see, the majority of our money that we receive is from property taxes, $167 million. I just wanted to give a little clarification of what unrestricted and restricted means, because we talk about that a lot. Restricted means that the money that we have received is designed to be used for specific purposes, and we can't use it for anything other than those specific purposes. So example here would be special education. We receive money for special education. If we were to go ahead and use that for something other than special education, that would be against the rules. We also have learning recovery funds, ESAR funds, and all the titles, 1, 2, and 3. They have very specific requirements on what we need to do with that money, and we have to make sure that we follow those guidelines. If we don't, then that money can be taken away from us. Unrestricted means that we have more leeway in the funds and how they're supposed to be used for the education of students. Now, when we talk about LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, when we talk about LCAP, that is built into the unrestricted budget. It's sitting on the unrestricted side of the house, but it is, in essence, restricted for us, because we have to use that money in terms of what is in our Local Control Accountability Plan. So we build this plan. It's a plan that's good for three years, and it tells us goals and actions, and that's how we need to spend that money. So even though it's on the unrestricted side, it's earmarked for our unduplicated account Okay, this is a very busy chart. So the things I want to just kind of point out on it, these are our general fund expenditures. So we have salaries and benefits, books and supplies, services and operating expenses, capital outlay, and other outgo. So the majority of the money, 83% of our unrestricted expenditures, is spent on salaries and benefits. So again, 83% of all of our unrestricted expenditures is spent on our people. Our books and supplies is kind of, you know, pretty easy to understand there. Textbooks, materials. When we talk about all the supplies for our classrooms, our schools, that's where that shows up. Services and operating expenditures, that is a big catch-all that includes all of our utilities, our insurance, all of our operational costs, our bus transportation, all of that is included in services and operating. And then capital outlow and other outgo is basically our equipment and our land and building improvements. And here, I'm going to mention our contributions to mandated, underfunded programs such as child development and special education. We are required, we are mandated to provide those services, but we have never received full funding for them. So when we don't have enough funding to cover those programs, then the general fund has to contribute to those programs. So I just wanted to do kind of a quick walkthrough of what is in our multi-year projection. And before I show you the multi-year projection, I just want to talk about some specific terms so that it's easier for people to understand. I've never really slowed real down like this and talked about it in this way, and I'm very hopeful that it'll be helpful for people. So when we start the year, we start... So when we start the year, we start with a beginning balance. The beginning balance is how we ended up the prior year. So you end one year and whatever's left in that year goes up to the top as the beginning balance. And we add to that any revenue that's going to come in in a current year. And we subtract any of our estimated expenditures. And that's how we get to an ending fund balance. So in this current year, our ending fund balance is $44 million and change. But again, some of that is restricted and some of it is unrestricted. Remember restricted means we can't use it for anything other than what it is determined to be used for by the, the ed code and the requirements. Unrestricted, we have more leeway. So we get to the ending fund balance of this school year and we have 20 million and change that is unrestricted. So next slide, I'm going to kind of start to talk about our reserves. I, I feel like reserves are an area where people have a lot of questions, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So we get to the end, um, the ending fund balance of the unrestricted is that 20 million and change, right? So we have a little bit of money down there that is assigned and it's not available for reserves. And that's that 1.4 million. What that is, that is lottery money and it is only to be used for instructional materials. That's all we can use it for. So, and it's great, we appreciate it. So once you subtract out that amount, what is left and available for reserves on the unrestricted side again is that 18,899,35. So then let's go a little deeper. So now that we know how much is available for reserves, that 18.8 million that we talked about. And you can see a blue arrow that's going down there and showing you what is available for reserves. To figure out what the, um, percentage is, we divide that. You can see where the total expenditures are. The total expenditures here are unrestricted and restricted. So you divide that and then you end up with the percentage of 7.96%. So that is our general fund unrestricted reserve. Um, we are required by the state of California to hold 3%. And so what is a reserve? A reserve is something that, money that is set aside for, um, economic uncertainties, something that comes along that you didn't prepare for, you couldn't have known about. And all of a sudden it's here and you got to pay for it. So the state requires us to hold 3%. We can all think back just very, not too long ago, when COVID hit. And we were all really glad we had some reserves. Things can happen in, in the middle of a school year that you're not prepared for. And that's what that money's for. It is one-time money. It's there if you spend it on these emergencies or the one-time events, then it's gone. So on top of that, we also hold a special reserve fund, 17. The state allows you to hold a, it's, it's a savings account that you can set aside. It's like our own personal savings accounts in order to hold money for reserves. And so we have this wonderful savings account. And in it right now, we have $14 million. 14,174,130 right there. So if you take that amount and you divide it by the expenditures, that's a 5.97%. You add those two different yellow boxes together and you get 13.93. And that is our current year, um, reserves that we, right now at first interim, what we think we have. Now, most community funded districts who are, who are unified districts have reserves above 30%. Most of them do. And there are many school districts across the state that are holding 17 and higher. It's important for a community funded district to have a good solid, solid reserve because our funding is a little bit volatile. We receive property taxes. We don't know what they're going to be. We get them in chunks. We assume, we, you know, best faith estimates based on what the tax assessor says. But we really don't know what they're going to be. And for us, if we hold the total reserves down there at the bottom, the 33 million, that would last us two months of payroll if something were to happen and the money wasn't, wouldn't come in. So we need to keep a good solid amount of reserves and that's why they're there. Now here's our multi-year projection, now that I've set the scene. Um, so as you can see, I've got that little purple arrow there that shows you that the ending balance from 2223 becomes the beginning balance for 2324 that we talked about. And then you can see that our total ending balance is that 44 million that we talked about. Um, and our unrestricted is 20, 20.3 million and on down. And you can go on down to see the 13.93%. So in the next two years, it's the same, same scenario. Um, and we're looking at 15% and 18%. There are a couple of things that are not included in this budget that I'll explain, um, in a minute that, um, makes those percentages, uh, a little bit on the high side. Okay. These are some projected changes for second interim. So the next time we come back and we look at a budget, it's going to be second interim. Um, one of the things that is not in our budget, and we are hoping that this is going to, um, come to fruition soon, is Proposition 28. The voters approved, it's a arts funding, um, uh, proposition that the voters approved for arts and music in the schools. And the CDE, um, has told us that they will begin allocations in February of 2024. Um, and once we know exactly what those are, we're going to build them into our budget. But we don't really know yet. The School Services of California estimated that we should get about 2 million in total for, for our schools. We're not sure how it's going to come in. We're not sure it's going to go directly to the schools or to us. Um, and one of the things that we have heard and we suspect is true is that the current arts and music teachers will not be able to be paid out of this money because that is what is considered supplanting. Um, this money is supposed to be supplemental, not replacing what you already have. We'll see, we still are, are learning more and more about that one. Um, the Arts and Music Instruction Block Grant, you're going to hear about that, um, tonight with the Strategics Arts Plan. Um, it has been earmarked for arts, music instruction and discretionary expenditures. So it, it's, that one's a little bit, um, more open. It's not quite as specific. Labor negotiations are not included in this budget. If there are any board approved labor negotiations agreements that impact budget, which we suspect they will, um, those changes will be reflected in the second interim, hopefully if negotiations are done by then. Um, and then we will include those in the multi-year projections. Oh, before I go to there, I don't have a slide, but I have a talking point. So we put this presentation together and then we got news on, on Friday that, um, came through from the Legislative Analyst Office that our state budget is not in a very good way. It's, uh, um, projections have come in, um, lot, lot lower than what we're expected. We've had a lot of issues kind of all coming together at the same time that have made budgeting very difficult for our state. Um, the, the IRS and the state taxes had been, um, the deadlines had been pushed out and pushed out again. So it was very difficult for the, for our state to know even what was coming in. They made projections, but those projections fell short. Or actually the projections were high and the money that came in fell short. So right now, um, they're projecting a $68 billion deficit to our state. And remember that the state has to balance its budget. It's not like the federal government that doesn't. The state does. So in order to balance that budget, something's got to give. There's going to have to either be some cuts. There's, there's, um, potential of, uh, using some of that rainy day fund that was set aside for these kinds of things. But in all the webinars I saw, and I think I saw four of them since Friday, um, the news is not great. And it's, um, the, the cola that was expected for next year, um, is looking to be maybe 1%, maybe 1.27% or maybe zero. Um, which is, and the comparison is to the, the last year that we saw a budget like this was back in, um, 2008. And those years were rough. So we're all going to have to, you know, buckle up, um, and get ready for what's going to happen next year with the state budget. I was around long enough to, to participate in the 2008 and nine years. And in those years, what happened was the state deferred payments. Um, and so there, that's one of the things they're talking about, potentially deferring. So schools, um, go along as if they are going to receive payments and then some of those payments slip into the next year. It's very, very challenging. Now, how does that affect us? Well, we're lucky because we're a community funded district in this kind of situation because we don't rely so much on state, um, the state funding. But we do have programs that do rely on state funding. Special Ed is one of them. Um, so we have, uh, Career Tech is another one. We have several that do rely on the state funding. So that could mean that there will be zero cola next year on those, which would be no increase. The other problem is that, um, that is probably more likely. So there's, there's this rainy day fund that is, um, could be available for the state to use. But if the, the governor were to decide to use all of that funding in one year, he would have to declare a state budget emergency. And I don't think that is politically appetizing at this point. So, you know, there's a lot of different things that they can do. But one of the things that we are concerned about here at Santa Barbara Unified is that, um, we are either not going to receive some of the funding we're supposed to receive or we will have some of our funding clawed back, which means they take it back. We already saw that happen with our Learning Recovery Grant money. And we have about 5 million of it left. We're worried about that. We're worried about our ELOP money, um, because there's to look at any funding that has not been spent yet. And there are a lot of school districts who have not spent all of their ELOP money. Um, and then what was, oh, there was mention of the, um, transportation, the home to school transportation funding, which is brand new. So I don't, that is something else that was mentioned that was possible. So we're lucky in that we don't have to rely on the state funding coming in. But we do have some targeted programs, targeted money that we are expected that we want to spend, that we're worried that they may take that back. And finally, I want to just say, the big one that we're going to talk about tonight, the Arts and Music Grant is another one that's, could be on the chopping block, even though as we're making plans to get going on it. So I'm sorry to end with bad news, but that's where we are. We're better off than, than many, but we do have to be very, um, careful with our funding.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Uh, is there any request to speak on this, Mr. Escudero? No request to speak? Okay, board members, comments, questions? Mr. Banning?
I, I just wanted to, um, I'm, I'm reminded of 2008 when I was in, um, working in, in cabinet level jobs in a basic aid district that had significant basic aid revenue. At that time, it was very controversial that districts were actually getting money clawed back and things were, were coming back. And there was, uh, questions of equity that addressed at basic aid districts. And there was a, um, a practice or a, an agreement that was made actually with the, uh, the help of School Services for Sound Finance, uh, or Schools for Sound Finance, um, that, um, where the base, basic aid districts, took what was considered at the time a fair share reduction. And they weren't allowed to take property taxes, but the state reduced, um, categorical funding at that point, equivalent to what the, the, at, at the time, the revenue limit reductions were in those school districts. So, um, I, I'm, I'm just putting that out there on the table that in the last time when it was this severe, the basic aid districts didn't walk away from it without hits, without taking that. Um, and, and so, uh, keep that in mind as we start to get new information. It will be critical to keep in touch with the Schools for Sound Finance and to know what's happening if it gets to be that bad.
Yes, they did, they did mention that in one of their webinars that, you know, we just have to, they're not hearing anything like that at this moment. But, uh, we'll know more, um, January 10th is when the, um, governor's budget comes out. So it's not too far from now. Um, so hopefully we'll have more information then.
Mr. Escudero?
I want to follow up on that. Mr. Banning or Ms. Fernandez, break that down for me, uh, as a layperson, what that means in terms of reducing categorical funding in exchange for the fair share.
Yeah, I, I vaguely remember that too, because one of the things we, I was working in special ed at the time and we said, well, surely they won't touch special ed. And they did. They, yeah, so basically they, um, calculated how much money we would receive and then dialed it back and we didn't receive all that we should have, um, is how it worked in special ed. But, and then in some cases, there were some categorical programs where they, they had money taken back from the state.
So if I'm understanding correctly, because I want to make sure I do understand this, even if it's a far out possibility. So for basic aid districts, for the amount of money that you made over LCFF, they would then, out of those categories, uh, take that amount out of each of, each of those or a percentage?
Yeah, it was a percentage more, more like, yeah.
It, it wasn't based on, it wasn't based on how much more you were getting as a community funded district. It was based on what the, at the time, what would now be LCFF cuts. If it got to the point that they were taking away LCFF dollars, they would figure out what was that percentage. And, and then, um, for districts that were in basic aid, they reduced state aid at an equivalent fair share percentage. If a, if that percentage got districts down to the point when they were no longer basic aid, they didn't take it past the, that point, they didn't take it past. But there were districts that were slightly in basic aid that their fair share put them very close to not being. And there was a, a cut point where they said, we won't go any further than that.
Thank you for explaining that.
Additional questions, Mr. Escudero?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so talk to me about, I mean, we're in negotiations, our reserve will be smaller. Talk to me about what these deferred payments do in terms of its relation to the reserve and under what circumstance, and I'm not saying this is anything that I would want to do, but I want to understand that 3% requirement that the state has. And I imagine that there are schools that spent into that reserve. There has to be, under what criteria of circumstances do school districts spend into that reserve? I'm thinking back at 2008, there were quite a few years after that that were pretty dire. It took quite a while to recover. I imagine schools spent into their reserves quite a bit and I want to know kind of a little bit more about that.
I'm not exactly sure of, of what, you know, would be allowed or not, but I'm sure that the county ed office would step in if you're dipping into your below 3%. Um, and they have to be able to approve your budgets. Um, so when we're talking about deferrals, I think it would more affect our cash flow. Um, so more than likely districts would have to, I remember at the time, and we have in the past as well, we would have to get loans in order to pay our bills because we're expecting the money to come in and it's not here, so you have to get loans. Um, back in 2008, I remember that there were special loans that were set up with the county ed office for school districts to help them to get by with cash flow. So it would more affect the cash flow. You would still, we're not an LCFF district, but those who are would, would not get maybe the last month or the last two months of payment. And then it would slip into the next year and it would be in the next year's budget for the state. And it's just, kind of just moving the money a little bit into the future so it's part of the next year. And then the same thing would happen the next year. So it happened over, I think about three years where they just pushed the money along a little bit. And then districts had to rely on, on somehow getting by with their cash flow.
I see, so similar to, I think I've seen your chart of talking about cash flows, um, where one of the advantages we've had in the recent past is we had a reserve that we could dip into instead of applying for these loans and
Right.
Okay. You talked about the possibility of, uh, clawbacks.
Yeah.
What areas would you anticipate? And obviously we'll learn more And obviously, we'll learn more in January, and probably January to the May revise. But as we start thinking about these, are there certain areas that you're particularly worried about?
I'm worried about the Learning Recovery Grant, because, and the ELOP monies. Mostly because we had other funding that had to be spent sooner. And the Learning Recovery Grant money was supposed to go to 2028. So I'm sure there are many districts, including ourselves, who have not spent all of that money yet. So to the district, to the state, it just looks like, oh, there's money sitting there. We can just take that back. They, the state would want to take back money that you haven't encumbered or spent, because then that puts a school district in a bad position. So I would think that ELOP might be one of them, because there are many districts that were having trouble ramping up summer schools and after-school programs that they didn't have before. We were lucky that we already had some of that in place. So I am anticipating that being one that they will look at, even though that's one of the governor's favorites. So that, there might be some problems there. Trying to see what else. And then, and then the Arts and Music Grant. We have seven million there that we intend to spend, intend to spend. And I'm sure that other people are in that same boat, too. They spent their ESsrs first, and now they're going to spend that. And so anything that hasn't been spent is gonna kind of look like fair game.
And they don't ask whether or not we've identified that funding for anything to them? It doesn't matter as long as it's unspent? Okay. Madam President, we do have a speaker for this item, if we want to pause on...
Yes, if, that's just because I'm asking if you want to, okay.
We have a speaker, Brianna Serrato? Welcome. Is it?
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again.
Hey.
So, didn't prepare this one either. And just wondering if, with the fiscal information and everything, and with insurances, with liabilities, things like that, just if the district is also taking into consideration as to how many IEPs have not been fulfilled over the last year, and how much that opens up the district based on not having the sped teachers or not having the special education para-professionals, that we are told, parents are told that, oh, the minutes will be made up. But it doesn't make sense of how those minutes will be made up if it's the same amount of staff, and it's a one-on-one para. So GUSD, over the last couple of years, really, really fumbled the ball with sped and opened themselves up to so many lawsuits from different families that they're still reeling with, with their current budget. And they are TK, or preschool through six. SB Unified takes over at seventh grade for those kiddos. So you're gonna have those families that already went through this process when they were in elementary school over there. They're gonna be more in tune and more prepared to make sure that their kids are being advocated for, and that they're getting the things that they need. And so, again, please, don't, yes, pay more on the teachers, but also the para-professionals really need to have an increase. Because who's gonna want to do that versus fifty cents less? I could just, you know, hand out meals at the cafeteria.
Thank you. I did have a question about litigation. Because there was a recent report about a litigation through the school district. And I understand that, I mean, when you look at our reserves and you look at the dollar figure, it would be a great chunk of that. But we have insurance, right, that covers incidents like that? And can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, that's correct. So that, that settlement or lawsuit that you're talking about, we have insurance to pay for that, and so it won't affect our general fund at all. The only thing that might affect it as we go down the line is we may have an increase in our insurance rates. I don't know yet on that, but that's, that's the only thing.
And are insurance rates updated annually?
Annually.
And around what time of the year do we, do you know? It's okay if you don't, I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
Lacey's saying maybe April. I don't, I don't really remember.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
And then, final question is, I know you had mentioned, we typically don't get the number of what property taxes are until around August. This was a strange year, because they deferred the date for property taxes. Is that right, or is that just income taxes?
Just income taxes, yeah.
But the property tax date we anticipate will be August 2024?
We tried to head that off earlier by calling and trying to get earlier information, but the actual official numbers come in in August of 2024.
And so if they're different, if they vary at all, do we do something similar to what we did this year when we had the ten, the side letters that affected the budget? We had the forty-five-day budget update. Do you remember that, for this academic year, or fiscal year, rather?
Right, so they, property taxes have come in lower before. We've had that happen to us. And, yeah, it would, it'll show up in our, our unaudited actuals, whatever the actual true revenue is. So if it's, if they come in lower than we expected, then we'll see that in the bottom-line ending balance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, first of all, just also to the fact that we're reporting a positive certification.
Yes.
That's a really big deal. So I just want to appreciate the work that goes in to make sure that that happens and recognize that. So just a couple of follow-ups on Mr. Escobedo's question. So with regards to the increase in insurance, is it not only just because it's an annual increase, but is it also based on any experiences that we have, such as, you know, lawsuits that are out there?
I would have to find out and get back to you on that. I just know, like, on my own car insurance. If you have any sort of a claim, they go out. So I'll get back to you on that.
And that, if I'm, it was before this board, but I'm saying that to say that was two thousand and eleven, something like that.
Yes.
Where does that, I mean, how does that play into where we are right now? So is there some reserve that, when that's happening? So, because that was some time ago.
Right, so there was a new law that came into place that, that allow, allow students, no matter what their age, to be able to go back in the past and, and, you know, file these claims. So pretty much all the school districts now across the state are, you know, getting insurance to make sure, to cover any of those kinds of claims that could have happened ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, that none of us were here, we don't know about. But they show up sometimes, so.
That's, that's not something you can plan for, so there's always, you know, right. And then the, the next question that I have, on the, was on page one of the report, where we talked about, under the local, the budget includes a four percent raise for employees in 2324. But on the slide, it says, updates in expenditures is two percent additional unilateral raise. Is that...
Yes, because we already had the two percent, and then we did a unilateral, another two percent. So it includes four for this year.
And that's that two percent that increases it to four? That was really over three years to be two, right? Didn't we have it like spread over three years? It would have been that third year and two, but then we gave a unilateral, so that makes it four?
Yes.
Okay, just want to, I thought so, but I just want to make sure. And then, oh, so I think you answered the question. So on page two, we talked about borrowing money. So if we had to borrow money in terms of a loan, it would be, the higher interest rate would in fact, impact us? Because if we had to do the loan between, for our cash flow?
So the good news is, the federal government has decided to stop increasing the rates. Yay! So we're all happy about that. Because anytime we would have to take out a loan, the higher the rates, it costs us more money, is pretty much what I was trying to say there.
Okay. And this is just me digging into it, just, just to make sure I'm understanding things that are not, is clear. So on page three, where we say the federal revenue forestry object level, it says, due to their instability, these funds are budgeted upon receipt. I get that. But as a first interim, no funds have been received. So do we have students that would, we would be able to pull those funds down, or that's just...
We have students that live in that area, the forestry area. The county education office asks us to report on how many students we have. And I did. I can't remember exactly the number, so I won't say it. But we do have students in that area, so we will receive some funding for that.
Okay, this is just, I don't think I've realized that we, how that actually was a separate entity. So thank you for that. And I think there was just one last question, I think, on the charter schools, where I think their funding is LCFF. Is there, yeah. I think it was for charter schools. I'm trying, because I was, let me just pull the tabs where I did that, so that I wouldn't be wondering where I was. Because I thought that was, yes, so on page fourteen, on the Form Nine, the charter school, and it's saying the revenue is LCFF. Can you, is that part of our LCFF that we share with them? Or how does, what does that mean exactly?
Lacey Preston, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
So that's just the term that the state uses to kind of call out what we get based on the local control funding formula. So within the LCFF there, that includes property taxes. And it could also include state aid.
Okay, and is that what we, is that our portion that we pay to the charter schools?
So it would be a, it would be a combination of the in lieu of property taxes, the property taxes that we receive, and then we transfer over to the charter school, and then that could also include some state aid.
Okay, so that makes sense when we're being asked to be a sponsor, so to speak. And that's not the word we're using, and we have to take that into consideration, right? That's always something that I learned earlier in the process. And also, just want to appreciate the fast facts in terms of that. I really appreciate really getting it down so we can understand it, that people that are not in it every day, and really understand those, those terms of what we just take for granted when we're in it every day. So really appreciate that. I think we've been talking about that as well. How can we have a little bit more comprehensive, those who are not in it every day? And also appreciate on page twelve and thirteen, really, you know, putting the description of those forms and what they mean and how they, they come together. So I really appreciate that, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And again, I just wanted to say thank you again for working hard to get a positive certification. And it's really important, so thank you.
Can, can I get a little further clarification on the charter situation? Charter schools in an LCS, LCFF district, as students leave the district to go into a charter school, the district, they take their money with them, right? The, the district has to give that, that money to the charter school. I was under the impression in a basic aid district, and when students left the basic aid district into a charter school, that they didn't take the full student apportionment. They took what the amount would be if the district were an LCFF district. Am I mistaken, or I need clarification on that?
So I think it probably depends on what type of charter school it is. So in, in, within Santa Barbara Unified and within our boundaries, we have four. So we have Adelante, Peabody, and Santa Barbara Charter.
Right.
We also have Olive Grove. So Olive Grove is a charter that was authorized by the state, whereas the other three were authorized by the school, the...
By the district.
By the district, by the school board. So for Olive Grove, since it's a state-authorized charter school, we only have to send our property taxes for the amount of students that live within our school boundaries. So for the state-authorized charter, so like for Olive Grove, Carpentaria, if they have any kids attending Olive Grove, then they have to send their share of property taxes. Galida would do the same. Based, so it's, that's based on the, the number of students and what district they reside in. But for the three charter schools that we authorized, we're responsible for providing all of the property taxes. So for example, Santa Barbara Charter is located in Galida, because it's on the Galida Valley Junior High Campus. So half of its students are non-district residents, and about the other half is district residents. But since we're a basic aid school district that authorized the charter, we are responsible for providing all the property taxes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting into the weeds here. This is just something I need a little bit more...
And the law changed, I would say, two, three years ago. So we can provide more information on what the CDA, CDE currently says we have to do.
Thanks.
We're hearing no additional questions or comments. Mr. Escobedo? Oh, I got you.
Just, I forgot to mention, and I just wanted to echo the appreciation. I think every, it feels like every time that we get these interim reports or budget reports that you all are doing your best to break it down for folks. And this fast fax is another step in that right direction. I really appreciate it as a layperson. And I think the more narrative that you can add to some of the graphs and the charts and the breakdowns would be really helpful. I think when I was looking at the, I was trying to look at the fast fax and look at the PowerPoint, I wasn't able to pull it all together until I had the narrative from you. So I think a little bit more context setting, but I think this is amazing. And I just wanted to share my appreciation.
Thank you. Dr. Maldonado?
And we're gonna add to that. I'm gonna have the team show you. We have put out a new webpage that went live yesterday? Monday? Today's Wednesday. Where we're gonna have all this live. So we, Ed has done a press release on it. As we go through the different budget cycles, we'll continue to update, and everything will be shared in this webpage, so that it's very transparent for the public and everyone else, and for all of you. Thank you.
And can I just add, that you just made me think of something in terms of, again, as we're really trying to be responsive to more communications, what are you doing, and the transparency. Part of the budget at the county, we do all those sorts of things. And this year, that I don't recall having done, but again, trying to improve communications, after the presentation to the board, so similar to what we're doing, what came out of that was, here are the takeaways that you should get from that. And I don't know if that makes sense in terms, oh, so Ed's smiling, okay, then, okay, it's been, okay.
Are you talking about board, board meeting updates?
Or takeaways from this presentation that we really want you to know. Just, again, simplifying it even further in terms of the board was presented with this, and that means this or that type of thing. So if you're already on that, that, that trajectory of thinking, then great, we're on the same page. Okay, with that, again, again, thank you for the report. May I have a motion for approval of the positive certification for the first interim financial report?
I move to approve the certification of the first interim financial report for fiscal year 2324 as positive.
I second.
Okay, then motion second, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for...
Thank you.
All right, next, we're moving to I three, approval of a five-year strategic arts plan, TK 12. Educational Service.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Maldonado. It is my pleasure to bring forward to all of you and all of us here in our community our five-year strategic arts plan. Tonight, I am co-presenting with two of our fifteen steering committee members for the arts. Natalie Spivak, Assistant Principal at Santa Barbara High School, and Sochi Taffoya, Assistant Principal at Franklin Elementary. About a year ago, when I came into the district, I was given the opportunity to lead the arts plan. Our last strategic arts plan expired three years before, a year ago. So about four years ago, our strategic arts plan expired, and we were not meeting as a, as a committee for the arts to look at the progress that we were making based on that previous plan. So as a result, we created a committee so that we could do this work together in collaboration with key members of our school district. What we did is with our previous arts plan purpose, we utilized what we already had. We did not discard anything that was already there, because we knew and we know that there's a lot of great things happening in the arts. And what we have, did as an entire committee, a steering committee, is we looked at those three areas or purpose, and we updated. And there were minor changes. And with those minor changes, the areas of focus were to improve access for all of our students in the arts, to also identify, cultivate, and empower arts education leadership. That means our educators of the arts, our site leaders, that are working day after day after day in the arts, supporting our students every single day, our arts directors, our... supporting our students every single day, our arts directors, our band directors, and all of our leads, PLC leads within the arts. And the third one is to build and expand on partnerships. We have an amazing opportunity here in Santa Barbara that is very unique. We have a significant amount of partnerships that can be developed and that we can strengthen. But there's so many other partnerships that we have not been taking advantage of in a great way throughout our entire district to provide access for our students. And when we talk about expanding partnerships, it's about people, facilities, and funding. I want to walk you through the strategic arts planning spiral that we engaged in. Again, I want to point this out to you in the starting point. So, the arrow on the right-hand side, notice that there's number, there, there's months and year in red for each of those circles. In the middle is the design and planning process and timeline, which started back on November twenty-twenty-two, about a year ago, a little over a year ago. That was our starting point. We also started to invite and establish the arts planning team. We identified gaps that existed within our previous plan. And we reviewed the baseline data that we had, which was not a lot. That is something that we need to work on. And we defined what our practical vision was going to be. We reviewed the content, the current reality, our strengths, areas of, of, of growth as well and opportunities. And I'm going to lead you to the next arrow where we are here, is we are launching and introducing the ma, the, the plan with leadership and the community. Our last opportunity to share this was about a week ago. We gathered with community members at the Santa Barbara Museum of Art to present this plan, so that we can give them just a, in, in, an overview before we brought it to the board for any other suggestions. And then we're in year one. We will implement year one actions twenty-three, twenty-four, and we will continue. We will do a midpoint progress in January when we come back, and then end of year progress in May. And then we will continue this cycle for the next five years or four years after this year, so that that steering committee, fifteen members that we have, are the ones that are going to be leading this work. You may be wondering, who else was involved? Was it just teachers? Was it just administrators? Was it just, you know, principals? We had a significant number of involvement. Steering committee was those individuals that were selected to represent the various school sites, as well as the five disciplines of the arts. Elementary, secondary was represented, as well as our alternative ed continuation school. Also, the arts site leads were, were involved in this process. Our principals, assistant principals, instructional council, this was brought to, to the instructional council to review and share about what we were about to do. Family engagement liaisons, community partner meetings that we had last year. SB Unified Family Town Halls, we held two, one in person and one on Zoom, to provide opportunities for our parents to be there. And also, the last one here in December, about a week ago, as I mentioned, the Arts Community Partners Meeting. So, quite a bit of involvement. It wasn't done in isolation. It wasn't one person or two or three people. It was a significant amount of people involved. The five areas of the arts are dance, media arts, music, theater, visual arts. And with that, I'm going to pass this on to Sochi, Sochi Tafoya, who will be sharing with you the next pieces of our goals.
Thank you. So, as you can see, as you can see, students are at the center of all, all of our decision-making and for the arts plans. We're really looking for the five artistic expressions, dance, media arts, visual arts, theater, and music. And these six goals are goals that were revised from the old arts pan, plan, but also refreshed with all of the art steering committee and the PLC leads and the, all of our educational partners. So, goal one is focus on the core curriculum, professional development. Goal two, go, goal three, equity and access. Goal four, staffing and leadership. Five, facilities, resources, and six, community ties. Kind of unpacking each of these goals from all of our educational partners. We really want a culturally responsive and sustaining K-12 core curricula, emphasis on culturally responsive. Develop benchmark assessments. We've done, I think, as I was an MTSS TOSA, so I really love data. So, I can't wait to see for our arts, all of our arts, our, our, all of our arts departments have actually best benchmark assessments in what we do and the skills that we give to our students. And then opportunities for Santa Barbara Unified Arts Educators to curriculum plan and share best practices. That also overlaps with ensuring professional development on our Wednesday PLC days, on our professional learning days throughout the year, on our summer institutes, to really have artistic professional development for our great VAPA teachers. And to ensure all students have arts instruction by highly qualified art educators. So, those are goals one and two. Oh, I'm learning how to use this. I, my apologies. Goals three and four, goal three, equity and access. In having these great conversations with our teachers, our site leadership, we understand that there are barriers for our students to take classes. We've heard that today with our public comments from our various amazing art staff. But really to develop a, a, a data system for the arts and monitoring the progress, to build the arts master work plan at the elementary school level, and specifically, as I was talking about, the junior high and high school, to really address the scheduling barriers for those artistic opportunities for our students. And that goes for the senior high with the block scheduling and room facility needs. So, that's, that's important. Goal four, staffing and leadership, accessing the current staffing needs and, and utilize our Prop twenty-eight funding that Ms. Kim talked about as well. And designate a full-time arts lead for K-12 to really put this in the conversation, the arts plan and the arts departments in the conversation in all the amazing work that we do as a team. This is, has been established and ongoing, maintaining an art steering committee for accountability, so that there is, what is it? It's not put on the sidelines. And then lastly, to update and develop job descriptions for each art discipline. Goals five and six will be discussed by Ms. Natalie.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. So, for goals five and six, just to go very briefly through it, you have detailed plans that have been shared with you. So, you can see phase one, phase two, phase three, and all of these areas. Essentially, goal five is broken into these three big buckets. So, bucket number one is we want, and when I say we, I'm representing, you know, the fifteen people that were on the, the meetings we had regularly, as well as our parent inputs, and all of the different stakeholder input that you saw previously. So, I feel honored to be able to represent the we here. Is, is really an expression of we want a coordinated calendar for communication. There's so many arts opportunities. There's so many community partnerships that we have. So, if we're able to coordinate a calendar of what's going on and when, that's really going to already highlight the great work that we're doing, and then will also show us where we can expand as we move forward. The next part is really just triaging and looking and working collaboratively to develop and have the sustainable plan for repair and replacement of all of our district-owned, owned equipment. That is a, a heavy lift, but we have a lot of resources there. And then finally, all about facilities and art spaces. So, I will let you look through the plan and see all the details on that, but those are the big buckets for goal five. And then goal six, we have such an amazing continued opportunity to work with our community partners for that partnership. And really, this goal speaks to one of the biggest keys to equity that we have in Santa Barbara Unified and Santa Barbara as a community. So, when we expand those connections and we clarify those connections, we can then route resources where they need to go. We can use data to explore where are the gaps, where can we fill that in, who wants to step up? Like, even right now, we're currently collecting information, and, and I'm sorry, Denise will have to speak more to this as far as what's going on in that area. But we have people making commitments of our community partners and saying, hey, this is how we'd like to contribute, and this is how we'd like to step up. So, that's a lot of part of our goal six, and that is ongoing and happening right now. And the next piece of it is developing that human resources support, meaning that it's a very clear pathway, because working with artists and working with collaborators, we want to make sure it's done with fidelity, and we're done it in a way that is, you know, student safety, that are, that everybody, all of our community partners that come onto our campuses have been well-vetted and, and all of those pieces. So, that's really important. And finally, that we are informed about all the different programs and accomplishment, because there is a lot going along, going on in Santa Barbara Unified. So, I want to point out goal three in our LCAP funding. This is part of that funding conversation. This is how most people are tackling Prop twenty-eight right now, because that funding has not happened yet, is districts are looking at their LCAP, and they're making sure that there's language in there, so that way when we go to spend that money, it's strategic and it lines up with our goals. So, it was written into goal three to improve access to culturally responsive arts education for all students on all grade levels. So, that is an actionable, measurable goal that we have in there. Thank you for all of the work to make that happen, the people in the room who did that. And on the left, this beautiful triangle comes from the Create California Guidance, which a lot of that group we have looked at to make sure that our work is focused appropriately. We took inspiration and weaved it continuously through this plan with the MTSS Continuous Improvement Model, meaning that it is more than just jargon, that phase one, that initial implementation, there's strategy there, and then full implementation, and then sustainability. There's a reason why we're presenting as a group. There's a reason why we work as a group. Is it, none of this falls on the shoulders of one single person. This is something that we do together. So, if at any time somebody were to step away from it, we have other people that are involved in it, so it will be, continue to be sustainable. And I believe we already spoke about the data decisions, so I will table that for now. And I'm going to throw it back to Dr. Alvarado. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, I'm very, as we have mentioned, there's fifteen members in our committee. These are the names of our committee members. This is a picture of one of our many meetings that we held together, and this is how, what our meetings look like every single time we met. And we spent between half-days, full-days, several-hour days, where we were able to build this as a team, so that we could bring you this today. And these are the site leads for our district who also participated, and you'll see some overlap. Some of these SB Unified Arts Site Leads are also part of the steering committee. So, some of them stepped up and said, I would like to be part of that steering committee. Not all of them are there, but some are. But we made sure that we included a population that would represent SB Unified. And last, I do want to share another group. These are the key community partners that we have worked with over the years. And there are many more partners, but we couldn't fit that many into one sheet. But we're building those relationships and those opportunities for our students. All of this is for our students. And we know that if our students succeed, we know that we're going to have, we will have a better community as well. The last piece I do want to share is the arts funding, as it was shared with you earlier. I'm not going to go too in-depth, but I do want to share that these are two areas, two buckets that we will be, that, that we're looking into for arts funding. The first one is the Arts Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. And these are funds that are available to, to obtain standards-aligned professional development in instructional materials in specified areas. This is not just for the arts. It could be used in other areas. As you can see here, we will be provided more guidance and more information. But the allocation for SB Unified that has been identified by the CDE is seven-point-three million dollars. Proposition twenty-eight, Arts and Music in School Funding, the measure requires the state to establish a new and ongoing program supporting arts instruction. And it must be spent at least eighty percent of the one-point-nine, nine-eight, eighty percent of the funds to employ certificated or classified employees to provide arts education. And this is for new and ongoing programs. And that total is one-point-nine-eight. And with that, on behalf of the steering committee, of all of our students, of anything and anyone that represents and supports the arts, we bring this recommendation for a motion to approve the five-year strategic arts plan, TK twelve. That concludes my report, our report.
Thank you. Any requests to speak on this item? Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Banning?
I, I just want to congratulate you on this, this immense bit of work. As a former, I started my career in education as a music teacher. And it's wonderful to see this kind of aspirational plan. And I understand inherently how much work goes into it. I love what I've, I've read in it in terms of the, the connection of curriculum and sequential type of things. It's just, it's really good work. Kudos. I, I do have one kind of, I, I don't even know if it's a question, but maybe just a, a point of, of clarification. There's, there's language in this plan, as there are in so many, about increasing involvement and increasing enrollment in programs and things like that. And it's difficult when you're in a, a situation where there are fewer and fewer kids. We have declining enrollment, and there, it's, there's competition for every spot. And if we have suddenly increased enrollment in all of the arts program, the question has to be asked, what is decreasing? It's the same student population, and how is that working? And so, this is why I call this an aspirational plan, because it doesn't have every answer built into it, and certainly, the, the needs of children and the abilities to provide what they need is, is paramount. Terrific work and, and kudos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banning.
Ms. Menus?
Yes, I certainly, I agree with what Mr. Banning said. Certainly, the importance of music, dance, arts, and so forth. I, you know, as the, being participated in the Christmas parade the other day, and knowing about the, seeing the Franklin School students that were in it, for, as an, as an example, it was wonderful. Had the opportunity to talk to one of the dads with a daughter who was in Folclorico and such. And I, you know, really appreciate this aspect in our schools. As some, an assistant principal sitting here knows, you know, I certainly had my children involved in dance and arts and such under the leadership of her mother, and know how much it builds self-esteem and the equity and all the good that it does for the community. So, it certainly has my full support for our children. Thank you.
I'll echo the appreciation, and this is important, and it's four years, I think you said, since our last strategic plan. And a few things that I wanted to highlight in this particular strategic plan, because I've, I've said it before to a few of my colleagues. I'm always skeptical of strategic plans, because in strategic plans, they are aspirational, but lack the accountability piece. And what I see in this is the accountability piece. There are goals, there are phases. It gives details. It talks about who's responsible for which phase and which goal and which task. And in addition to that, talks about the steering committee. And so, I, again, wholeheartedly am appreciative of this work. As someone who has been a part of other strategic plans, where they kind of sit on a shelf, I feel pretty confident that this is not going to be one of those strategic plans. And it, when possible, and I know these board meeting agendas are so long, but in whatever vehicle possible, to get regular updates or periodical updates on this process as it moves through, that would be great. And so, the only question I have is, you recently had that feedback meeting with community partners, and it was recent, and it was, it was at the end of this work product. So, I'm curious to know, what was some of the highlights of the feedback that we got, now that we have kind of the, the total package to show the community, not just input through the process?
We had one before the end of last year, and then- And then we had a second one because we were really focusing and wanted to ensure that our community was aware that our focus was on culturally and linguistically responsive arts programs. And so we were asking for a commitment and as currently what, after that meeting, we sent a commitment form in which the community members or community partners will be providing us with a commitment. And what is it that we need to do as a district so that we can support their commitment as well? So we're in the process of gathering that information. So more to come on that. We're excited. Actually, just, I was having a convers- or email back and forth with one of our community partners asking, is can I get more time to work on this? You know, and so they're taking it seriously and they really want to work with us. And in making sure that the work and the offerings that they have are aligned to our work, not, not the opposite. And so that is key. And that is something that, it's a mind shift. It's a complete shift from what we have been doing. It's more of a, these are, this is our plan. How can you support the plan for our teachers, for our students?
Thank you.
And one last thing, if I may add, is the Steering Committee, before they made the commitment to join, we did ask them, this is a multi-year commitment. And if you cannot make that commitment for whatever reason, your responsibility as a member is to find someone to replace you who will represent the art that you, that you represent. So that we don't miss that opportunity for our students.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I'd like to also echo my colleagues and thank you and appreciation for this report. So all of you that are presented here tonight. So thank you. And being so enthusiastic even at this late hour. Just in terms of, you know, this is a community that love arts. And so it's evident also by the community partners that you have listed here. And so really looking forward to how that then develops over time. And just really how you've very comprehensively walked how we're going to do that and how their role is in that place. So I appreciate that. I do have a question. So on your, I don't know if it has a slide number, but it's talking about the Proposition 8, where it speaks to must spend at least 80% of funds to employ certificated or classified employees to provide arts education and instruction. But in the budget representation, we talked about, we can't really use that salary because it would be considered as supplanting. So can we get some clarity on that? Okay.
I can explain that. So we currently invest a good amount of money in arts, music, teachers in elementary that do their rotations through so that teachers can have PLC time. Those teachers would not qualify for us to use that funding because we've already made that investment, is what we've been told. So we would have to purchase additional staff with that funding. So that's why her slide says we can't use it for the current teachers. And Denise's slide says, but it does need to be used 80% of it towards staff, whether it's certificated or classified.
Right. So I get the supplanting part. So that makes sense. I'm just trying to tie it. So this, should this be something new? Has to say new, right? Not just imply, because it implies that it can be. So there may be, maybe some clarification on that language, on that particular sentence. So yeah.
And on the first, first bullet, it does say the measure requires the state to establish a new and ongoing program supporting arts instruction.
Yeah, it's got the new program, but it doesn't, it needs to also tie down to employ certificated, that it's new. So it doesn't, you know, reach into the supplanting part. Because I definitely get that. So just again, to making sure that we're clarifying that piece. So with that, any, Ms. Menos?
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little bit behind tonight. Wanted to thank Ms. Alvarado for an excellent presentation. And also, I believe, Ms. Bevvak and Ms. Tafoya. Thank you so much and for all that you do for our district. And then I also wanted to compliment for the clear goals, the LCAP Goal 1, LCAP Goal 3, and the District Initiative about increase, three, in terms of increasing the A through G participation for all our students. So thank you.
Anastasia?
I just had a quick question about with, you guys said you guys would consider like changing the schedule for junior highs? Or like, how do you guys plan to incorporate, give students more time in the school day to, like, receive the benefits? Because I do agree, like, having arts and all these extracurricular opportunities is like really beneficial for students, like find an outlet at school.
We would need to look, assess the, what we currently have and also determine what the barriers are. So that we're able to work together, as Mr. Banning mentioned. There's a lot of competition with different programs. So we would need to look at each individual school. What programs do they would, can they offer, they would like to offer, and what is possible?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We know for the questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval?
I'd like to move to approve the arts and, oh, where is it? The, the five-year Strategic Arts Plan, TK through 12.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you so much. We will now move to item I four, Approval of Renewal Explor ecology Memorandum of Understanding for 2023-24 year. Is that you two?
That's also me.
All right, Dana. All right.
I just want to say really quick, thank you to Sol Chile and Natalie for being here so late in your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We, over the years, we have had an agreement and with Explor Ecology and where we have provided garden maintenance and state standards-based garden education lessons to our elementary schools. What we are proposing is for us to continue in, during the school day, to have Adams Franklin, Franklin Harding Monroe and Washington Elementary during the school day, paid by PTA funds or site funds that they have allocated. And we do know that there needs to be some equity there. So as a district, we decided to look into what else do we need to do to support the schools that cannot pay through their PTA funds? And what we are doing is after-school program, we have a significant number of students that would benefit. And we would bring forward, Explor Ecology will provide services at elementary schools, providing services for over 800 students through the after-school programs funded through Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOF, ELOF funding. So our, we would like the approval. This would cost about a, if you could scroll down at the bottom, please. There's a table. The last page. Go up. We have a table with the school programs. And as I mentioned, some schools will be paying with site funds or PTA funds. And for us, for the district, we would be paying $45,900. And the rest of it would be paid by each individual site with a total cost for the after-school and during the school day of 104,000, 104,400,000 with the various sites paying for it, as well as the, the district.
That concludes.
That concludes my report.
I don't see any requests to speak on this item, Mr. Escavito? No requests? Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval?
I so move to, sorry, to approve the Explor Ecology fantastic sounding program.
Need a second?
A second.
Motion in second. Please raise your hands and say aye in approval.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we're moving to I five, Approval of New Secondary Course Requests, 2024-25. Dr. Sheffield?
Good evening. There we go. I am here, good evening, Board President Wendy Sims-Moten, Board Members, Superintendent Maldonado. I'm here to ask that you approve the new course requests for the year 2425. Every year we come around this time with the list of courses that we are asking for you to approve. Once these courses are approved, there are a few of them that we will be taking forward to be approved by the UC system to be considered for an A to G, to fulfill an A to G requirement. And so this is our first list and we will be bringing a few more courses as we move into January. Our students are in a place right now where they're beginning to register for the new school year. And we want to make sure we have all the courses prepared for them.
No requests to speak? Okay. Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. May I have a motion for approval?
I will move to approve the 2425 courses list on the board report dated December 13th, 2023.
Need a second?
I second.
Moved in second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will next move to item I six, Approval of District WiFi Upgrade Through CDWG. Yeah, that, CDWG. Why I can't say that at 10 o'clock at night. So.
It's a mouthful.
Good evening, Board President Sims-Moten, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. Tonight I am bringing forward for your approval, the District Wireless Upgrade Project through CDWG. Back in April, I presented to the board covering a current state of our network infrastructure. And before we get into the wireless upgrade, I just wanted to do a brief recap of that. We had industry professionals, excuse me, that we work with alongside ETS staff, facility staff, assess our entire network. And we established four major priorities that came out of that. But we identified that our wireless system was anywhere from five to over 10 years old. Our cabinets and battery backups that house all of the network equipment that keep everything running is over 10 years old. And our structured cabling, so our Ethernet and our fiber optics is anywhere from 15 to over 20 years old. So a lot of antiquated equipment that we want to get modernized. So out of that came four major initiatives. And we're going to talk about our classroom wireless upgrade tonight. And that is to modernize all of our WiFi throughout all of our schools, throughout the district. We're hoping to get that, get approval here tonight and start and take advantage over the holiday break. We hope to complete this within 90 days, which gives us some time just before state testing. So we have a robust, secure and reliable network. We're hoping to see better, we're not hoping, we, we know we'll see better improvement as far as performance, reliability and security. The cost of this project is just north of $820,000. And we will be utilizing Bond Measure J and I funding for this. So this is not operational or gen-funded. We will be procuring pro, the hardware, the software licenses and all the services to complete this project through a piggyback contract. And just to cover that process briefly, this is in place of the typical competitive bidding process. Since this is over the bid limit, normally we would have to go out to bid, identify all the project requirements and utilize a lot of staff time and effort and money to develop documentation, request for proposals, and accept all those bids, evaluate those bids and come back to you and award that. By using a piggyback process, we can utilize specifically here, the Irvine Unified School District went out for a very similar project. So we can leverage that work that they already did and take advantage of a much faster turnaround time, competitive pricing while maintaining our compliance with government procurement code. So that's just a little bit about that process. We're super excited to get going on this and we know it's going to be a tremendous benefit to our students and our teachers. And with your approval, we'll get started as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay. No requests to speak. Board members, any comments or questions? Mr. Escavito?
So only question I have is, I remember at the beginning of the year, Mr. Banning and I were doing tours of each of the schools with Dr. Maldonado. And one of the comments we had heard specifically to WiFi is that on big testing days or huge bandwidth days, it would be intermittent, it would go down, it would be extremely slow. Is this working towards addressing that at, at our schools?
Absolutely. This is going to be a big feel for, especially our secondary sites where there's bigger class sizes and a lot more devices that are connecting concurrently. But that with a lot of the other projects that we've completed already, like increasing our bandwidth through Cox Internet Provider and future projects as well. But this will be a definite step in the right direction for that, yes.
Thank you for that.
I just have one quick question on maintenance. So you were noticing your first slide that things are 5, 10, 15 years old. So is there now a maintenance schedule so that we're not that far behind on upgrading our equipment?
Absolutely. I'm glad you asked. So we expect that this technology will last anywhere from five to eight years. And we have that budgeted in for future out-year projects.
Okay, perfect. Additional questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the District WiFi Upgrade through CDWG.
I second. Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move to I seven, September 2022-23 Annual School Statutory Fees Report. Ms. Marina, is that right?
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Maldonado. President Sims-Moten, congratulations on being re-elected.
Thank you.
And board members, the cabinet. So tonight I bring to your attention the request for acceptance of our annual 2020, 2223 School Developer Fees Report. Or as, you know, they're known as School Statutory Fees Report. This is by Government Section 66066B that requires local agencies to report, to collect the development fees, developer fees and to report them annually to the board. For the residential and commercial developer, for the new developer fees were adopted last year. And the State Allocation Board has a right to increase them every two years based on the inflation. So last year, this board approved it, approved the Level One Developer Fee Justification Study for our school district and the new rates that were imposed last year, as well as, you know, you know, all the... Anyway, this was approved on September 13th of 2022. In this new report, you have the, you have the financial information, the balances. You have the projects that are currently underway. And you also have the list of projects that are proposed for the future. So that's the, you know, that's the end of the report. Let me know if you have any questions. Be happy to answer.
Thank you for the report. I'm sorry, it's just, it's just late. Any, I don't see any questions to speak. Board members, any questions or comments?
I so move. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Bid motion in second. Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Never move so fast, Ms. Menos. Are you ready to go? Okay. All right, next is our Human Resources Report. Dr. Beckio.
All right, good evening. Good evening, Board President Sims-Moten, Board Members, Dr. Maldonado. I present to you this board meeting's Human Resources Recommendations. And I do want to just take a moment to point out, the board will be very happy to see this, the list of promotions that you can see at the end of page one. These are promotional opportunities for our employees. So I do like to call them out and congratulate them publicly. Michael Carbajal, Jaclyn Campos, Matthew Corral, Alexander Garcia, Gabriela Perez, Marcela Ramirez and Dolores Torres. So congratulations to them for their promotional positions. And then moving down, I did want to just call your attention as well to the addition of the premium pay stipend for bilingual stipends. And that's at the bottom of page two. And again, I'll point out our very own Brenda Aguilar, who's here tonight, is on this list. So congratulations and thank you. And then, yeah, and with that, I'll turn the list over to you for any questions you might have and hopefully your approval.
Yes. No requests to speak? Just also, Dr. Beckio, you usually mention our resignations and, is it resignations or retirements? Not resignation, retirements. Do we have any?
I didn't see any, no. So I usually do point those out, but I did not see any this time around.
Just want to make sure we didn't overlook them. Thank you. All right. Hearing no additional questions or comments from the board, may I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the Human Resources Recommendations.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
So approved. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. Item eight, I eight, Approval of Additional Program and Cost Increase for Ripple Effects Student and Family Services.
This citizen comes up. I just want to take Dr. Beckio and his team for, all those transactions you see every month, that's all the work from the team from month to month. I just want to... I just want to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edison.
And superintendent, cabinet members. This, if you recall, we brought ripple effects with our bundle deal at the beginning of the school year. Ripple effects has an adult companion program to that, which allows us to provide services or opportunities for our staff to train. We try and bring forth high leverage tools, which means they check multiple boxes. This checks, checks the box in our hate bias, anti-black work, because staff can then dive in to go a little bit deeper about race modules if they're interested, as well as helping with S E L, mental health, and how to just engage with students in the classroom around behavior. The seven thousand five hundred is the additional cost to the contract we already brought forward. Remember when I brought the contract for ripple effects, I did inform you that the great thing about the contracts is we pay upfront, and then it's just ten percent every year after that to maintain the file. So that's what this is. I'm asking the board to approve the add-on to the contract tonight.
No requests to speak. Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Edison. I like the bundling going on from there. So I appreciate the efficiency with that. So may I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the additional program cost and increase with ripple effects educational ally.
I second.
Then motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Edison. So approved. Now moving to I ten, approval of cost increase for Maxim Healthcare. Mr. Shetler is on his way.
Good evening, Superintendent Maldonado, Board President Sims Mouton, and members of the board. The first item I'm bringing you tonight is an increase in the contract with Maxim. If you recall back in August, you approved a contract with Maxim to help us provide special education paraeducators in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. They have been a great partner in recruiting to help fill those positions, and we currently have thirty-one Maxim paraeducators working out in our schools. This requested increase would allow us to keep those thirty-one employees through the rest of the school year and to help fill some really important vacancies for us. And so with that, I am welcoming any questions that you might have.
Board members, any comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Shetler. May I have a motion for approval, board?
I will motion to, wait, I'm on the wrong item, sorry.
Ten.
I'll motion to approve the cost increase for Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services. Motion to approve the contract and memorandums of understanding over ten thousand dollars.
I second.
Your motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is mine as well.
And you're there too again. Okay, yes.
So this item is a request to approve a contract with an agency Stepping Stones to provide a special education teacher that will be placed at San Marcos High School. San Marcos High School has had a vacant special ed teacher position since the beginning of the year. One of the ways that has already had an impact is that we had six special ed teachers at the cap, the twenty-eight cap, for the first quarter. And we really want to get those numbers down and provide that teacher that we intended to hire from the beginning. So if approved, this teacher would begin January eighth and would remain in place through the end of the year. There's no additional cost of the budget because we had already budgeted for this position. And so the, the cost of the agency will be covered by that.
So we're not, we're not approving the position. We're, what are we approving if it's already in the, I'm trying to understand it clearly.
Yeah. So you would be approving the contract with the agency to provide the teacher to us. So they'd be an employee of the agency working in our school.
Okay.
They would be the second special ed teacher that we would employ this year who's a contractor. The rest are all directly hired.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Board members, any comments or questions? Hearing none. May I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the special education teacher position with the Stepping Stones Group LLC.
I'll second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving to twelve. I twelve, second reading, global adoption of the revised Santa Barbara Unified School District Board Policies.
Yes, and I bring good news to the board. We will not be reading each of these policies this evening. So in August, we, the team, we reviewed six hundred and sixty-four of our board policies and administrative regs with C S B A representative who walked us through the process. The policies have, some of them hadn't been updated since two thousand and six, two thousand and four. Main thing is that we needed to update them to make sure we were compliant with ed code and even government code and so on. When, let's see here, sorry. Essentially, we, when we did this process, the three-day workshop, we reviewed the, the policies looking at, and we decided to do three things with those policies, actually four. One is to either keep the board policy itself. The second one is to use C S B A's policy, updated policy, that was created by their legal team. Or the third one would be just use C S B A policy and include edits that would align with our school district. The last choice would have been eliminating a board policy if it was obsolete, so. And with, with that being said, I wanted to bring up one more bit of information to you. We're going to have the team speak on some of the highlights regarding their policy. If you have any questions regarding board policy or administrative regs in any of the specific areas, please, board members, contact the individual team members, the leadership there. If you're still unclear who to contact, you could contact me directly, and then I could make sure that we get the information to you. Or arrange a time to meet with them to get more detail. So I pass this to Ms. Hernandez.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So the business services, our series is, is the three thousands mostly. And the, the major ones that we changed, there were a lot that we had already updated, the board had already approved. But we had some where we looked at C S B A and, and ours, and they, ours were actually newer than C S B A. So we kept all of those. And there were, the biggest ones that changed had to do with the unduplicate account students and transportation and nutrition. We had already changed some of the A Rs in a couple of these areas, but we went ahead and, and used the C S B A and also added our pieces that we had already changed on the A Rs for, specifically for transportation. In the past, we had reduced fees for students who were qualified for the free and reduced meal count. And when the law changed regarding the unduplicate account students, we could no longer charge fees for those students. But also, we couldn't charge any fees for the, the rest of the students in the unduplicate account. So English language learners, homeless students, we already were providing transportation for them. But it, it expanded the amount of free transportation that we were providing to the unduplicate account students. So we made sure that we used the C S B A board policies on that, so, because that was new law that we wanted to make sure we got it right. And then for the A R, we added our, our little special pieces for the district because we provide transportation to the elementary schools, but not all of the elementary schools. It's just five of them. And then we also provide M T D bus passes. So we wanted to make sure that in our A Rs that we added the piece that is specific to our district. So the other one that was, was the free and reduced meals, we wanted to make sure that we use the C S B A board policies on that, because that also was updated in regards to the, that now any student who wants to have a meal doesn't have to prove that they are a low-income student. They just go get a meal. I mean, it's, it's, so all of that changed, and we wanted to make sure that we had the correct laws. So we use the C S B A board policies on that.
Thank you, Steve. All right, this on, yep. So I have a lot of the one thousands, not all of them, but just some of them. Communications are mainly a lot of websites, social media, et cetera. The two I'll kind of call your attention to is that a lot of them were the same. You put communication to public. The changes reflect new case law that were minorly updated over time, maybe new references to cases that have come up since. Some of the changes I made were things like, maybe we have designee, who's a superintendent designee instead of being a principal at some districts. The biggest difference was the advertising and promotion there. We had some unique Santa Barbara Unified Policy that we wanted to carry over to the new one. Specifically, it limits who can send communications and target it to be relevant for our students, for our families, for our staff. So to send something, we copied over here, different M O U with the district, and it has to be relevant to their programs. They partner with us on contractor programs with us, P T As, and government agencies for stuff like health and safety.
Good evening. And as we look at the six thousands, that's for curriculum and instruction. And for those that we updated, many were last updated in twenty-ten. So if we did make updates, it was to reflect updated California Education Code or policy that the state of California has made. Some ones in particular that we wanted to highlight, the selection and evaluation of instructional material, just as we had brought the approval of wit and wisdom in that identified process, we made sure that was reflected in our board policy. Our transitional kindergarten, that was primarily looking at updates made in policy and ed code and making sure we address our students and placement in the proper grade level by age. And then looking at our English learners, we, we title our English learners Emerging Multilingual Learners. We updated that language, and we did update some of the previous testing and criteria used to the current use.
Thank you. As for technology, technology has become more integrated into multiple board policies. So ETS collaborated with multiple departments, and that's not just true for ETS, but this whole process was collaborative between one, from one department to the next. So we consulted with business on campus security, student services on digital records, and business again on technology procurement. The two I want to talk about that we focused on specifically was the staff and student use of technology policies. No major changes, although we did use the C S B A updated recommendations because we wanted to remove some language that was referring to older technologies such as videocassettes and LaserDiscs and stuff like that. But also, as it currently is, and what we're trying to change here, is we went from a board policy to an administrative regulation that explains how we're going to carry that out. And then also, we have the actual agreement that staff or student sign. So we had three documents, and it was a little confusing. So what we decided to do, based on C S B A's recommendation, was to consolidate that down to a B P and just an exhibit which basically acts as our A R and our agreements that students and staff sign in one. So it's a lot more clear and, and accurate.
All right. Thank you very much. For H R, we are the four thousands. And the four thousands are, there's a lot of them. They deal with employees and all the employee policies and A Rs. There's a lot of, a lot of legal stuff in there. So we found that, we had a lot update, a lot of them were up to date. However, as we went through, we, you know, laws change pretty quickly in, in H R based on case law and, and things that happen pretty frequently. So we found the updates, mostly what we did was just made sure that any of the C S B A new ed code or new laws, we, we had those updated. So some of them, that's, that's mostly what we did. I did highlight a couple here on this presentation. One was the remote working. That was four-one-one-three-point-five. We didn't have that. And that's, again, kind of the advent of, that came from COVID, and so the C S B A had a remote work policy. So we, we adopted that one in there. Wanted the board to know that and be able to review it. And then the four-two-one-seven-point-three, actually, it's, it has a bullet point on the slideshow that says six months versus one year. That's actually the, that's actually the probationary status one, so that's wrong. But what the layoff hire change was, is that we've gone from a sixty-day layoff window on the classified side to now it's, it's a March fifteenth, just like the certificated. So that, that's just an example of one that changed that we updated. And then this one was interesting, and I wanted the board to know about it, because the board adopted the board policy several years, well, more than several years ago now, the maintaining appropriate adult-student interactions. That was our own adoption, if you remember, Wendy. And so what we found in C S B A, though, is that they do have a very similar board policy. And what we did not want to do was adopt, we didn't want to just take and adopt the C S B A one because the board did a lot of work on our own. But what we did do is change the number. And the reason we changed the number was because now we'll get the C S, C S B A updates if there's any legal updates to it. So that was, that's why that number changed. And that's all I have for H R. I'm happy to take any questions later. Just contact me.
The Student Family Services Department focused mainly on the five thousand series. The five thousand series is all about students. There were places in that series where there was more of an ed services bent to a particular board policy. So as Tony mentioned, we did trade some policies back and forth between departments depending on the specific language. But the couple that we want to highlight for you today are the B P A R around the uniform complaint procedures. I know there was a lot of work done last year around our practices for how we collect uniform complaints, the ways that families and staff can report those, the forms. But we hadn't refreshed our board policy and our A R. So this is an example of one where we adopted the C S B language and have included it with the ones to be approved to get it current. The other one that we're, we're highlighting today is the board policy fifty-one-seventeen, which you all recognize because we've spent a lot of time in here discussing that one and really trying to get it right for our district. So we now have, as you know, a separate B P and A R to talk about our inter-district transfer process. And because we were in the middle of those conversations with the board when we were going through this review process, we did not adopt theirs. We said we want to keep Santa Barbara Unified because we had a more current and more personalized policy to go with on that one.
So as you could see, we, we put a lot of thought in this process. As you could see the tally of the various policies and administrative regs, of what we've changed and what we kept. There are a couple of things I just want to bring up in particular, which is, number one, we had to pass, it's very important that we pass some of the board policies because of the federal program monitoring that we're going through. And I know, for example, Kim worked on one just recently, that we got a template from C D E saying just to be compliant, cut and paste into this, and this is our latest for making sure we're in compliance with that policy. So that's number one. Number two is that board policy, we talked earlier tonight, the Oversight Committee talked tonight about creating some sort of policy or procedure around making it an official advisory group. Board policy is the perfect example of where we can take that and do it strictly as our board policy, Santa Barbara Unified School District Board Policy. It has nothing to do with C S B A. So it's, these are the things to keep in mind. The last thing I wanted to point out in particular is that it's very important that we inform our principals. I know many principals, including myself, when I was a principal, I didn't really realize the importance of, of a B P and an A R. But I think it's really important, particularly with our school district, for our leaders to understand what's guiding our work and helps us to keep us on track in terms of whether we're looking at curriculum or whether we're looking at, how are we doing interventions in schools? We had that conversation earlier today. So all these things tie together. And so we'll continue to bring updated board policies to you. And so we'll continue to bring updated board policies to you. And I would imagine that there will probably be a couple that we'll need to update with FPM coming through. There might be one or two. I know our reviewers haven't seen or gone through some of it yet, so just want to let you know that. And that's our report.
Okay. No requests to speak? Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Menos.
Thank you so much for everyone, you know, individually going through the groups of the, sorry, the board policies, and, you know, much appreciated and very understandable. Thank you.
Mr. Banning.
When I was an assistant principal, there was a shelf that was six feet long with binders that were the, and much like you're talking about getting training for site administrators, there came a day that shocked every principal in the district I worked in, when instead of calling HR and asking, and asking what to do, the answer was, have you looked in the policy manual yet? And if the answer was no, we went to that six-foot shelf and dug them out. I appreciate the work that's been done on this. I oversaw it in Solana Beach when we did the whole thing. And unfortunately, the status that they were in before this doesn't happen purposefully. It happens by a long period of, we'll just push this off another week or another meeting or such. So with this great work done, it's absolutely essential that we be kept in the loop with the quarterly things and that accountability for the board of keeping things updated. Because the reason you change them is, one, to keep up with the laws that CSBA brings, and two, because you're using one and you realize, whether it's wrong by law or not, that it needs attention. If we keep that as an operating part of what we do, then we don't have to do this in another 10 years and say, gosh, the last time we did that was when Banning was still on the board.
Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you all for the tremendous amount of work that you put into this. I think last meeting, I was one of the least popular people in this room on such a late night, and I totally get it. I get it, the reason why. It's a lot of work to go through all of these policies. You all spent three days, three long days doing this. I know, hearing me say, not a subject matter expert, say, hey, I want to see some red lines, I want to know more detail. But I do want to explain the rationale behind that because I think it's really important. This isn't just about, this isn't doing all this work for show. It's a lot about transparency. I don't know if you remember, we had a parent here in the audience that was talking about frantically going through these policies because they had gotten the packet released on a Friday. They have a child in special ed, and they wanted to make sure that the policies served their child to the best of their ability. And that is a big component of why we have these discussions and why it is important for you all to tell us what has changed, what are the big things, are, if they're little things, fine, but if it substantively changes, because these board policies are so important, the ARs are so important about how we apply the board policies, that was at the heart of what I was asking. It was not because I questioned any of your expertise, the work that you had put in. I would go to bat for each and every one of you because I think you're the right people in these positions. And I also need you all to understand that if, for myself, and I only speak for myself, if I'm going to put my name to these things, I need to understand what the changes are. And so that is the relationship with Dr. Maldonado and you all in the cabinet is, I absolutely respect and support you, and I respect your expertise, but I need you also to understand that I have to explain everything that I put my name to, and I have to understand what it is. And if I can't understand it, and I can't explain it to someone and defend it, then I can't put my name to it. And so that's what this was about. And so I just wanted to say, you are appreciated. I appreciate you so much. I know it was frustrating to hear that at the last meeting in the 11th hour after such a long meeting, but I appreciate you all going back and identifying those big places and going in here and explaining to us what the big changes are, even if it seems like a busy work. I promise you, it's really important for families that watch this meeting, our employees that watch these meetings, for us to make sure that we know what we're voting on. Wholeheartedly, I have so much appreciation for you all, and I want to share that rationale with you, so you don't think I'm just giving you busy work or asking for more things when it's not necessary. So to Dr. Maldonado and the team, thank you so much.
Thank you. And we're still at this late hour with you again.
No. No, really, thank you for that. And I would just echo in terms of the appreciation for the work that it went into that. And having been here now seven years, we're just doing so much to improve the process of even transparency, getting things out to, you know, so that it's much clearer out to parents or anyone that's accessing this and into that point. So you asked the question, it was there, and I know these folks were willing to do what they needed to do to do so. So again, so that we're getting out here being transparent, and that sometimes is hard work to do because it's been years of this different things. And so I appreciate, again, all the work that was going in. Because John, when you mentioned that board policy that we literally rewrote, like, CSBA, we're not having it with you because it doesn't go far enough. So just that give and take. And the other thing I would just say that, so that we can learn, you know, to your point, how we can learn more about them. So when there are requests that is coming forth, where can we insert board policy a little bit more so we can connect what we're being asked to approve, or take, this is board policy this, so you can kind of put them to memory to that level. And, you know, so it's like, it would say, hey, the board, like today, it's like, oh, I can go down a list and say, if we're talking about that, do we have a policy I can point to as board policy 4000 or Areg? So the more that we can insert those in the background that may be becoming to us, then we will more be able to commit those to memory when they come to this, where those changes are. So much appreciated. Additional comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Escobedo, you go lead that.
Yeah. I'll make the motion.
You go make the motion.
I motion to approve the second reading and global adoption of the revised Santa Barbara Unified School District Board Policies.
We need a second.
I second that motion.
Not Smokey Robinson, right. Motion, fifth seconded, all in favor. Ray Jada, say aye. Thank you. Motion, please. Thank you so much. Thank you for your work on this. Okay. So we got to our last item here. We're going to do some management of the item, just so we can give an overall view. You had a chance to look at the presentation, and so Dr. Maldonado is going to give us a short executive summary of that, so we can look at that and go.
Thank you. Good evening, again. I am going to release my team from this responsibility, and what I'm going to do, board members, you have seen this presentation because we skipped it at the last meeting, so I just want to basically go over the memo. The background for the Student Outcomes Report, we have two every year. This one is a fall report, we'll have the next one in March. And it's really used to drive dialogue around the educational, for educational partners, students, staff, parents, community partners, as they analyze the current local control accountability plan and begin to develop the upcoming school year's plans. With this information, we will be able to develop the district's new three-year LCAP this year, and this report's data will be used, along with other sources, to create goals and actions for the next three school years, which will be 24, 25, 25, 26, and 26, 27. The current report, Student Outcomes Report number one, provides data and information that is used to determine the district and school impact on student outcomes as identified in the original 2124 Local Control Accountability Plan. The data that was shared in the PowerPoint and in the extensive report, or the longer report, is data that was released by the California Department of Education and included student enrollment, comparative CASP data in ELA in math, by state, county, district, and school, and by student groups, and also comparative CASP, I don't know why I can't say that word, CASP data in ELA in math by elementary and secondary levels, and claim level achievement. We also included, because we know that we, you know, we're looking at these one end of the year, kind of a dipstick check on assessment progress, we included STAR early literacy assessments in grades K to 2 from Renaissance STAR, and we also added data on high school graduates meeting UCCSU requirements by student groups, both ethnicity, low income, homeless, and others. And the next steps are that the district and schools, and they've already been doing this since the early fall, is looking at these student outcomes, looking at the way that we're going to respond to where students are, creating plans for intervention and prevention as needed. So you will get this report again, Student Outcomes Report number two, in March, for your review, and we hope to actually have a whole, full presentation. But in the meantime, if any of you really want to go through it with me, sit with me, I'm happy to sit with you at another meeting to go through it fully. I am proud of many outcomes like the UCCSU. While we're still not where we need to be with our Latino students, they are still trending in the right direction, so they're not going down, they're still going up, but we still have some gaps to continue to fulfill. Programs like PEAK, you know, our high school showcase, our counselors getting more versed on the A through G. I met with the counselor not too long ago, who told me, we have a video that we show to each student on A through G because it's such a long and such a complicated thing for them to understand. And so each year, they go through that video before they meet with their counselors. So there's lots of steps being taken to do that. And that concludes the Student Outcomes Report number one. Any questions?
Comments or questions? Oh, there's a, there is a request to speak.
I don't know who this is.
Brianna Esarada.
Still hanging with us.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking around.
Oh, thanks for having me, maybe. So I was reviewing all of the various board documents before the meeting, and one of the things that jumped out to me was the, I know you guys can't see it really well, but the little grid of the 2022-23 CASP met exceeded data in math, state, county, district, and school by student groups. And with regards to math, the reported disability group was the lowest out of all of the groups for both elementary and secondary, and they were one of the lowest ones out of those marginalized groups for the junior highs. And the reason I wanted to make comment on this is to give a little bit of an anecdotal as to how the sped staffing of both the teachers and the paraprofessionals affect kids' outcomes for these tests, which everybody cares about the stats. Roosevelt's been doing great with their stats, but still, we need to help those special ed kids. So my child is never guaranteed that he will have a para educator for push-in time in his gen ed class. This means that not only is his IEP not being met, he will incur a learning loss since he is not able to successfully access his education, and it will potentially be a learning loss for his peers if the teacher needs to provide more support to him. This also then compounds the difficulty of the transition to school in the morning, since it is a guessing game as to, as he puts it, school bad, math too hard. When his typical paras are out or have to backfill to assist with a more difficult student whose assigned para is out, trying to get him to go to school the next morning then becomes that much harder of me physically having to carry him into the office harder. And it just, it compounds on everything else. Ken, thank you. So, and I brought this up at the CAC meeting, and other parents had also brought similar experiences up. And we were told, the students that not receiving their service minutes due to staffing shortages, that various district staff stated those minutes would be made up for the students now that there is full staffing. My question is, how will that be accomplished for classroom push-in and/or general para educator support? While in theory, this sounds somewhat reasonable, two glaring factors seem to be ignored with that plan. The first is that if there are not enough staff or bare minimum staffing levels at a site, how will minutes be made up? If a student doesn't receive their mandated one-to-one support due to staff absence, how will they have that time made up if the staff are already assigned to assist other students? Is a para going to be pulled away from another student to make up the missing minutes for the student with missing minutes because they have somebody that advocates for them? The second issue is to when the push-in time is being made up. If the IEP states it's for a specific subject, i.e. math, are they going to have those missing minutes applied to other areas instead? Or is the teacher going to reteach that math lesson when the para is available? So again, just wanting to try to put a face to the importance of having paraprofessionals and the sped teachers that are trained, that are stable, that are able to stay and be here for our kids. Because without that stability, it affects not just the sped kids, it affects all of the other kids in the classroom as well. Because if you have kids that are having behavior issues outside because their routine was all off, and they don't have that support person that knows how to handle them, it's an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions? Ms. Menos.
Just a quick comment that I noticed, here, let me see. Yes, that, sorry, that I noticed that the, well, the Latino students went up, you know, one to 49% from 48%, and the African-American students, 75%, held from the previous. So I was just pleased with that.
Additional comments, Escobedo?
So I know we're going to get the second Student Outcomes Report, and I did ask this before the meeting, but I would like a little bit more detail about, it sounds like particularly from the STAR assessments, we get more useful data about how we can better support our students, especially if they're in that nearly met category. I'd like a little bit more detail about how we're using this information to get them from the near, to get them to advancing categories, right? And they're categories, and there's only so much importance that we should hold them, but there are probably indicators in there that tell us how we can better support our students. I'd like to know a little bit more. I know that we are doing some of that work. And in addition to that, tangible examples about how we're taking pockets of success in the district for schools that are supporting particular categories of students better than others, right? I don't think we're at where we need to be in any given category. But where we're taking those pockets of success, how we're then replicating it in other schools and sharing best practices. I would love to know if there are tangible examples happening in our school district. So it makes it a little bit more real for us, because I know one of the responses I got was, is we share best practices. I'd love to know what that looks like in action, and are we seeing results from that in past years? And maybe, maybe we're not, we're too close to that sharing of information to really start seeing results, but it would be nice to know a little bit more. I think there are some positive outcomes in your presentation and in the report. I particularly saw some increases in early literacy, which was really encouraging, and I'm anticipating that we'll hopefully continue to see that trend. We just have a new curriculum. I don't even know that we fully have seen the positive outcomes from that new curriculum yet. So thank you. Definitely looking forward to a more comprehensive presentation, but I will take you up on the offer of sitting down and going through the report a little bit more in advance of the next Student Outcomes Report. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, you know, putting the face to name. It's always important to do that. And how are we connecting to, you know, when we're looking at our report about, you know, we had the increase in para educators, how are we tying that? Is it because of lack of staff? Where are we tying that information together to see, again? So it's all a collective effort to make sure that all our students' needs are being met. And I think it's everything that we've talked about, what even starting at the beginning of today, you know, about salary negotiations, it all comes down to what is the outcome of our students. And for me, that looks like, you know, as we start to look at a strategic plan or the language, results-based accountability, each of us have a role in providing or helping the results be, you know, in terms of our student's outcome, be proficient or improved or giving them a different experience. It's, we all have to have accountability. On our accountability, on that, that supports student outcome has to be our role in finances and our superintendent and policies, all those things. We all have a role to be able to do that, so that when we look at this student outcome, it really has come from all areas of everybody doing what they need to do and be accountable for that. So I just, I want us to keep that in mind, too. And I just want to say, as we conclude this evening, thank you all for staying. Some of you had to, but anyway, so, but thank you for staying with a good attitude. But just in terms, as we go into this next year, we're But just in terms, as we go into this next year, we're in some difficult and challenging times, not only just here. We're no different from what's going on externally. But it's how we get through it and how we're going to lead through it as opposed to feeding into some of the things, how we're going to lead through this and, you know, work together. It's going to take all efforts of working together to get us where we need to go. And we do hear it, we read it, we see it as a board. And it is not taken lightly, you know, in terms of that. And sometimes we even take it home with us. Anybody that cares about that, everybody's taking it home. So everybody, that things that were expressed here today, sometimes not so nicely. But those things expressed, we hear it and we see it. But I think for, you know, just going forth in the next year, we want to make sure that we do keep in mind that trust does, you know, change does come at the speed of trust. And we need to be willing to trust each other, that we're going to get ourselves there together. So I'd like to conclude this meeting. One thing to remind the board members that we have a special meeting forward to appointment on January 9th and 10th because it states here that our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 16th. But make sure you have those, on those calendars. Go ahead and have a safe and happy holiday. We want to get out of here before 11 o'clock. And thank you again, board, for putting your trust in me for one more year. Thank you.